Good evening, ladies and gentlemen, and welcome to the regular committee of the Hall meeting for Monday, November 27, 2017. The clerk today will be Ms. Sheila Gurry. I want to recognize that we're holding this meeting on the traditional territory of the Tsunamik First Nations. Late items, please.
Thank you, worship. This evening on the addendum, we have, we're adding Agenda Item 7A, the Draft 2018 to 2022 Financial Plan, and the report titled Draft 2018 to 2022 Financial Plan. For Agenda Item 8A, the Draft Mafia Sutton Master Plan update, we're adding delegations from Dave Hammond and Scott Bradford. And for Agenda Item 13B, we're adding a delegation, for the delegation, Mr. Holden Southward, we're adding a handout. And I think that's it, your worship, but there could be a couple councillors with a late addition as well.
Thank you. councillor Hong.
Thank you. I got Mr. Kevin Shaw that wanted to present council with an award. Do we want to do that under presentations, or is that under delegations? What works, Ms. Gurry?
I think there's a certificate he would like to hand out that would go under presentations, and then he would like to be a delegation as well, that we would add to the end of the delegations.
Okay, so I would like to first add him as a presentation, if I may.
Mr. Kevin Shaw, under presentations, okay. And delegation to what?
I believe it's to security downtown, your worship.
Yeah.
Is that on the agenda?
No, that would be a, just as a delegation, late delegation.
So, under other business?
Thirteen, under thirteen.
Okay, C, D.
13D, your worship.
13D, thank you. Thank you. Any others? councillor Floyd, I saw you coming in and out.
No.
Okay. Thank you very much. So, with respect to Mr. Shaw and presentation, under 5B, we need a motion.
Second.
Moved by councillor Hong and seconded by councillor Kip. Any discussion? Seeing none, call the question. Who's in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. And we also need Mr. Kevin Shaw with respect to delegation under, under eight, pardon me, 13D. Moved by councillor Hong.
Second.
Seconded by councillor Kip. Move, second. Discussion. For clarification, Ms. Gurry, for the late delegation, off the floor, five minutes.
That's right, your worship.
Thank you. Call the question. Who's in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. So, can I have a motion for the adoption of the agenda as amended, please? Moved by councillor Kip and seconded by councillor Hong. Thank you. Any discussion? Seeing none, call the question. Who's in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Can we have a mover for the adoption of the minutes for October 23rd, please? Moved by councillor Thorpe. Seconded by councillor Armstrong. Any errors or missions? Seeing none, call the question. Who's in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. So, the first item, under presentations, is 5A, Draft 2018 to 2022 Financial Plan. Mr. Victor Memmer, Chief Financial Officer, to provide a presentation regarding the Draft 2018 to 2022 Financial Plan. You don't look like Mr. Memmer.
But first, a few words from your city manager. Is the microphone on?
Yes, it is.
Great. Okay. You have to bear with me, I forgot to bring my speaking notes tonight, but as we enter into the 2018-2022 budget cycle, this is your last budget of your elected term, so we thought we'd approach it a little bit differently this year. Over the next week, you're going to see videos released from each of the departments, and as well as other communication announcements by them, indicating what generally their departments, what types of services they provide to the community, but also their priorities and goals for 2018. So, over the next five days, six days, there'll be a couple videos really, released per day. We're also going to get from the Chief Financial Officer, a report card on Mayor and Council's fiscal management of the budget for the last three years and going into 2018. So, these are all important pieces of information that, take a look at the State of the Union. How has Mayor and Council performed over the last three years, and how have they performed in achieving their goals and managing the financial resources of this community? Before we move into the presentations this evening, I thought we'd pause for a moment and take a look at your successes, because there are a lot of successes from Mayor and Council over the last three years. Through partnerships, we see that tourism is thriving. We have, over the last year, delivered a new level of tourism services through Tourism Vancouver Island, and also with the Nanaimo Hospitality Association. We are now on the verge, through partnerships, of seeing a passenger ferry start delivering services to the city of Nanaimo. In 2015, council made the unprecedented decision to work in partnership with the Port Authority and Tsunamik First Nations to go out for a public process to get different companies to bid on providing this service. And as we go into 2017, the city has recently provided a letter of support for island ferries to deliver that service from the Port Authority, and has sent a letter over to TransLink. So, we're about to see passenger ferry be delivered to the community. Also, through partnerships with Tsunamik First Nation and the Port Authority, we're seeing new access being provided to Newcastle Island, or Seychelles, and we've heard back from Tsunamik First Nation that the attendance levels over at Newcastle were higher this year than in previous years, and we saw the introduction of new programming that reaches out to children and recreation users within the community to use this wonderful resource, Newcastle Island, which we manage jointly with Tsunamik First Nation and B C Parks. Also, through partnerships, we saw the purchase of sporting facilities from School District 68, and a joint venture that has successfully produced a new artificial turf for the community. It had a soft opening a couple weeks ago, and is expected to provide a higher level of service to our community that need to use turfs. We also saw in Parks and Recreation, you'll be hearing from Richard Harding in his video presentation about some of the successes and things that you've built. You built the Stevie Smith Bike Park. We're almost finished building the Harwood Community Lacrosse Box. The other thing that I wanted to celebrate is, yeah, things are getting built. This council is building things. And after several attempts to get a hotel at 100 Gordon Street, you changed tax, you went out for an expression of interest to see what the business community could build at 100 and Gordon Street, and at the end, you chose to award that contract to a development company that's going to build a hotel, and they're poised to break earth in the near future. And that's significant, because we've heard from independent consultants, CBRE, that if a hotel is built in this town, that'll help the city manage this facility, the Vancouver Island Conference Centre. So, things are getting built, and we're looking forward to seeing 100 Gordon Street complete its project in the next bit. We're also going to see a new access route built across One Port Drive. Front Street will be expanded, and will now connect the rest of the waterfront over to the Port Authority. Obviously, that's a good thing for tourism, for the heli jet, and for the proposed passenger ferry. And finally, after many years of the community and council wanting to see improvements for the waterfront walkway, you're actually going to be building segments of the waterfront walkway. So, I think there's a lot to be celebrated by this Mayor and Council. You have allocated funds for building capital projects, you're actually getting them built. You've also allocated funds for important social wellness and community wellbeing, and affordable housing strategy, and social awareness and public safety. You invested in your committees, and you're actually getting recommendations and approaches to move forward so that the city can invest in its citizens and social wellbeing of the community. This is in addition to your recreation and wellness achievements, and building more facilities, improving service levels for the community. The other thing that this council did that I think is going to be a legacy project for this council, and the community is going to continue to see the benefits and reap the financial rewards of doing a core services review. Only implementing two of the 70 recommendations is going to yield massive cost savings for this community and for the city. By overhauling the procurement and purchasing process, we now have different safeguards in place so that the city is consistently and effectively purchasing the great many things that we purchase every day throughout the year. The other improvement and recommendations that are pivotal in making changes to our community and how we do our business is changing our capital projects management systems. And we have started that process, and over the next few years, we're going to see how that will benefit the community in terms of how we're allocating budget on an annual basis, how we're going to use tax dollars, how we're going to use reserve funds, and to better manage how we roll out capital projects going forward. We're also going to see a higher level of participation from council. Normally, staff presents in its budget, the capital projects that it needs to work on. Much of that is driven by our asset management plan and our risk assessment, but there's also an opportunity for council to have input. If there's segments of sidewalks you want to see built sooner, if there's a bundling of a capital project that you think should be done on a more timely basis, if it's already in the plan for 2020, but you'd like to see work starting next year, you're going to have an opportunity to question staff about what would that mean? Does that mean that other projects get pushed out? If yes, which ones? And you're able to make decisions about how you want to prioritize the capital projects, not just our staples that we have to do on an annual basis to ensure that our infrastructure remains in a good position, but also those ones that are meaningful to the community in the different areas in which they live. So, I just wanted to congratulate Mayor and Council on good fiscal management for the last three years. I'd like to congratulate you on getting things built. And from a staff perspective, obviously, it's wonderful to be building things, to be building artificial turfs, to be building lacrosse, to getting streets to access areas where we want to see an extension of our waterfront walkways. So, we're very pleased to be able to work on these projects for you, and based on your direction to us, we've brought together this budget for you to take a look at this year to see where you're going to invest. Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, Mayor and Council. I bring you good news and good news. First, the good news is I have a very brief presentation to make.
No.
And secondly, the good news is I will not be answering any questions. I have my colleagues sitting to my right here at the back, and there will be fielding questions that you might have at the end of the presentation. Following up on Ms. Samra's presentation, I am going to put some dollar signs on some of the achievements that she has mentioned, and we'll dive into the draft financial plan. First, I would like to thank members of the media, those who came in on Friday morning. I think there were three or four other members of the public who also were in attendance on Friday morning, when we shared a news release about the Draft 2018 to 2022 Financial Plan. I'd like to reiterate the messaging that we provided then. What is in front of you today is a recommendation from staff. Last year, we ran into complications of messaging when we came out with our recommendation. A lot of people in the community assumed that that was your adopted budget, but this is a recommendation that through the city manager, staff is making. It opens a period of public engagement between elected officials and the residents, and when you finally adopt the financial plan, hopefully mid-December, and you also adopt the property tax sometime in Q1, then these two documents would then become the substantive increases or decreases and priorities that you would have committed staff to provide in 2018. So, having said that, the increases or decreases, increases in services are all recommendations at this time, and it opens up the discussion with members of the public as we proceed. As a way of an outline of what I'll be covering in my short presentation, first, I would like to deal with an update on the strategic plan, the 2016 to 2019 strategic plan. I will also be talking about progress on some of those projects as we have it now. I might, at some point, speak to operating results for 2017, but I might skip that part because that report is actually coming in the next week or so. Maybe we'll just deal with the financial plan, and then we'll look at the context, cost pressures, the impact to a typical household based on the recommendations that we are making, a few highlights on both the operating and capital plan as they sit today. So, how did we get here? Our budgeting process runs, I think, in, for a period of about six months. It runs for a full year, but we really focus on it for a period of six months. We started off in June. Between June and August, departments were, we were talking amongst ourselves, preparing some initial projections, some initial work with the C O in terms of what the priorities would look like. The preliminary numbers were given to finance, and finance did the calculations. Once that was done, the output was given to senior management to look at, a number of business cases that were looked at. A few are included in the business, in the financial plan as recommended now. A few were deferred to future years, and we spent a good number of meetings in November, meeting with council in Canberra, providing you with some high-level information on the plan that we are putting in front of you. No decision was made in those in Canberra meetings, as they were simply briefings for you to dive in into some issues there. Some of the issues, obviously, had to do with acquisition of land, some of the issues had to do with personnel, and so that information was provided as information for you, as context as you get into discussing the budget in public with us. After today, or as of Friday, the draft plan is now out for people to discuss. Today, we'll provide you with a high-level overview. On Monday, December 4th, we will have an E-Town Hall here at the beginning of the council meeting. We're hoping that will last an hour, an hour and a half. And then, on December 7, at the Finance and Audit, we will also have another budget workshop. It will not be us presenting as much as you engaging with us, and members of the public also asking questions at that point. We are hoping after that meeting, we would have enough information to make changes on the draft, so we can actually recommend the financial plan bylaw at the December 18, 2017 council meeting. So, that's the plan as we have it now. Obviously, once that is in place, we are required that by May 15, we should have the associated property tax bylaw approved as well. 2016 to 2019 strategic plan, we received instructions from you in the summer of 2016 with five projects and two initiatives. The initiatives were property acquisition and affordable housing, and the five projects were the South Downtown Waterfront, Port Drive property, Beben Park Facilities redevelopment master plan, sports and entertainment centre, waterfront walkway, and Georgie Avenue pedestrian and cycle bridge. With the South Downtown and Port Drive, the instructions were we needed to complete the Port Drive waterfront master plan, work with, in partnership with NPA and S F N on a number of initiatives, some of which Ms. Samra has talked about, constructing access to that side of town, and also support the foot fair initiative. All these pieces are in motion, and some of them are complete and others are in progress. At the bottom, I've just put some numbers together of the cost to date between 2016 and 2017, and the projected costs for some of the projects, including Wilcox, as well as other access to that site. Under Recreation, Culture, Sports and Tourism, two projects were identified, the Sports Entertainment Centre and the Waterfront Walkway. We completed work on the event centre early this year, and work is now underway. At least you've watched, I think you received a couple of weeks back, the draft plan on work that we'll be able to carry forward in 2018 and 2019 in terms of the waterfront Under Public Safety, you instructed us to promote community-wide emergency planning, provide public safety through fire and police. The big piece here, internally, we worked on our own business continuity plan that would support the work that we do in terms of services that we provide, in addition to the general emergency management services that we provide. You have preliminary, or may provisionally, approved the replacement of fire station number one, and that is reflected in the amounts we'll be spending in 2018 through to 2020. Under Governance, you instructed us to carry out a core service review, implement the recommendations, update the procedure bylaw, implement new committee and commission structures, and also support a healthy corporate culture. The Phase 1 of the core service review was done, and the recommendations you received and endorsed, and we've been busy implementing them. So far, we have about 56% that are either complete or in progress, and 44% are scheduled for 2018 and 2019. And at the bottom are the costs so far. We have provisionally provided about $255,000 for Phase 2 of core services review, if that's your wish, and I think the past few weeks, we've heard you talk or intimate that you would like to proceed with that. Under Community Wellness, two projects, Georgie and or Georgie Avenue Pedestrian and Cycle Bridge, and the Beben Park Redevelopment Master Plan. The instruction was for us to invest in walkways and bike routes, collaborate in development of poverty reduction strategy, focusing on affordable housing, homelessness, food security, children, mental health, and addictions. And at the bottom, I've shown the cost to date for, at least for 2016 and 2017, and what's projected in terms of, in 2018, the bulk of that $1.4 million is really for construction of the Georgie Avenue Greenway at some point in 2018. On the initiatives, we are still exploring, right now, we provide about $600,000 a year towards property acquisition. We're hoping we can, at some point, increase that to about $1 million. We also have the affordable housing public engagement process that is underway, and at the bottom, I've just provided some allocations. We were looking at some significant property acquisitions in 2017 and 2018, but for reasons of confidentiality, we won't talk about specifics of what those properties will look like. So, that was a quick run overview of the update on the 2016 to 2019 strategic plan that is underway. Now, moving on to the Draft 2018 to 2022 Financial Plan, start off with the context. When we are planning, or when we are working towards coming up with the draft financial plan, we're informed, obviously, by the O C P, several master plans, the 2016-2019 strategic plan that I just went through, and also the core saves review. Those were kind of like the feeds of information and instruction and context to the work that we are carrying right now. So, what are the cost pressures in 2018? In 2018, we have made a provision for salaries for both exempt, Q P and I F F. I F F do have a contract, Q P does not have a contract yet, that contract expired, and we should be going into negotiations at some point. And the salary increases is estimated for both exempt, Q P and I F F, to about $1 million. You also, at the beginning of 2017, extended the general asset allocation of $1 million, or 1%, and that's the second cost pressure that we're dealing with. At the end of 2016, we came to you and asked for an endorsement for the establishment of the Strategic Infrastructure Reserve, and the plan was to move largely the casino revenues over a period of years to lessen the impact on property taxes. And this year, in 2018, we will be moving about $800,000 of gaming revenue funds to that Strategic Infrastructure Reserve, and that's equivalent to about 0.8%. Then, you also, at the beginning of this year, approved two additional non-uniform support staff for R C M P, and also three F T Es from the uniform or the sworn officers, and that comes up to about $600,000 to $700,000 in total. And then, we have a few small items in terms of contracted services in parks, in administration, that represent the bulk of that $1 million. So, the total cost pressures are $3.8 million. We are projecting that we'll receive new property tax revenue of about $1.2 million from assessment growth. That leaves us with a net requirement for additional or new revenue of 2.6%. 1% of property tax revenue is equivalent to $1 million. So, if we are looking to raise an additional $2.6 million, this requires a 2.6% property tax increase in 2018. So, that's the property tax increase that we're recommending, that you consider as we go forward through the deliberations on this plan. If you were to endorse the 2.6%, what does that mean to a typical household? A typical household here would pay user fees and also would pay prior property taxes. A couple of weeks back, you received a presentation on the user fees, and the bylaws were recommended for approval, and they'll be coming to council on next Monday, December 4, for three readings. And our water is going up 7.5%, which is equivalent to about $36. Sewal will be going about 5%, which is equivalent to $6, and solid waste pickup or garbage is going up 24%, about $32. And in total, for the user fee-supported programs, the increase is about 10.1%, and is equivalent to about $74. From a property tax perspective, a typical household that we're using here is a household with an assessment of about $441,000. And a 2.6% increase would be equivalent to about $51, moving from $1,947 to $1,997, just under $2,000. So, in total, when you add up the user fees and the property tax, this would be equivalent to about $125,000. So in total, when you add up the user fees and the property tax, this would be equivalent to about a hundred and twenty-five dollars a year for a typical household or about ten, ten dollars per per month in increases. I'm hoping you can read this slide. What I tried to do here, which I think is going to become a benefit of these four-year terms that we we have, what we tried to do was to compare the financial plan that your council came into, which was the twenty fourteen to twenty eighteen financial plan, compare the projected property tax rate increases from that plan and the actual property tax increases that were through your decisions so far. Quick to point that the twenty eighteen, there's an asterisk there, is a recommendation at this point. But if you notice, the line at the top, that's the twenty fourteen to twenty eighteen. In twenty fifteen, the projected property tax increase was two point two percent. The actual one ended up being one percent. In twenty sixteen, the projected also was two point two percent, but the actual ended up being a zero percent increase. In twenty seventeen, the projected was six point one percent and it ended up being one point five percent. And the projected for from the twenty fourteen, twenty eighteen financial plan for twenty eighteen was zero point one percent and we are recommending that this goes up to two point six percent. Now, when you take all these numbers together and look at the reduction in property taxes for that period, it comes up to an equivalent of about five point five percent. So which, if you're using a million dollars as equivalent to one percent, that's a reduction in cost of about five point five million dollars if our recommendation would sit for the two point six percent in twenty eighteen. If nothing changed, which means on an annual basis going forward for this term of twenty six, twenty fifteen to twenty eighteen, the cost reduction out of your decisions from a property tax would be an equivalent of five point five percent per annum. Having said that, just want to talk a little bit about the operating budget in twenty eighteen. I know we talk about twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-two, but we focus mostly on the immediate year and then we project the other four years. First, where is the money coming from? We are going to collect between user fees and property taxes, we'll collect hundred and fifty-eight million dollars. About sixty-eight percent of that hundred and fifty-eight million dollars comes from property taxes, but twenty-seven percent comes from user fees. Licenses, charges and penalties account for about four percent and investment income comes in at about one percent. The message to take away from here is we are not too far off from typical municipalities. Usually we talk about a sixty, sorry, about a thirty, seventy split and so we are within that that range. We're a little bit off because we are behind in terms of updating our user fees and we are hoping that once the project is done, we should be able to rebalance this back to a seventy, thirty split. From an operating budget perspective, where is the money going to? About forty-five percent goes to wages and that's because we are providing services. Thirty percent goes to contracted services and the rest between legal and repairs, utilities, transfers to other governments and and debt at four percent. The takeaway from this, obviously, as a service organization, you would be heavy on salaries and contracted services as you provide programs and services. Infrastructure that we use to build, we actually bring in contractors to help with that kind of work. So if you were to do the math, I said we'll collect between user fees and property taxes about hundred and fifty-eight million dollars. And here I'm saying we're spending hundred and forty-three dollars in operations. The difference of about fifteen million dollars is collections for asset management and for our capital program, which we'll talk about in a few slides from from here. Some, I just picked a few here and my colleagues here could speak more about some important initiatives that are going to happen in twenty eighteen. And as Ms. Samra did mention, we will be releasing a couple of videos where we would, each department would summarize their specific initiatives in twenty in twenty eighteen. We will be rolling out, obviously, the phase two of the automated garbage collection. If you vote to proceed with the second phase of the core service review, that will be another initiative that we'll undertake. We'll also be undertaking the water user rate review in twenty seventeen, I'm sorry, in twenty eighteen. Right now, we are completing the general user rate review for other departments. We are also obviously through our legislative services, we'll be preparing for the twenty eighteen elections, some work to review some of our bylaws across the city. We also spoke to you early or late, late, late summer about our content management, so we're proceeding with that project. We are also proceeding to implement Perfect Mind to replace class in public, in parks and recreation. We are also implementing the business continuing to plan led by the director of HR. That that plan was developed in summer of twenty seventeen and now we have to make sure that across the organization, we have all the recommendations in place and all the resources that we require available. We're also going to be implementing the Deloitte report. We presented this to you a couple of Mondays back. We'll also implement the user fee, the general user fee recommendations. You will receive these through the finance and audit in early twenty eighteen and we are hoping to start implementing those changes probably in the twenty nineteen financial plan and budget. Through Mr. Lindsay's shop, he'll be doing some prep work on the update to the OCP and also with the adoption, hopefully in the early, in the new year, we'll be implementing the new DCCs as we go forward. These are just a sample, this is not everything. On our website, we've posted the briefings that we provided to council. There is more on our website of these initiatives that people can actually take a look, a look at and engage with us. We're happy to provide clarifications on this. So on the capital side, we're looking to invest about two hundred and twenty-three million dollars for the five years, twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-two. About fifty-seven million of that would be in twenty eighteen. This chart here just basically summarizes where the funding is going to come from. The bulk of this program is funded through reserves. Now, we had this conversation last year. When we're talking about reserves here, we are not raiding our rainy funds in this instance. You recall from Ms. Samra's presentation that she spoke that most of what we do is asset management and we are collecting and we started collecting twenty thirteen considerable amounts of asset management funds and we're now beginning to use these funds. So that's where the bulk of our reserves are coming from. In terms of how the outlook looks like for our capital plan, now this is one of the findings from Deloitte where they said because of the way we're doing or implementing our our projects, we, if you're looking at the outlook, it looks like we are unbalanced. We have this huge initial years where you have to spend so much and then it tappers off down, down, down the road. And part of the work that we'll be doing is to try and rebalance this based on either risk or service levels that we need to to deal to deal with. And part of this obviously speaks to some agency of things that we need to be doing going forward. But we'll try and rebalance this as part of the review and implementation of the Deloitte's report. But like I said, just under sixty million dollars in twenty eighteen and then that tappers off to just over thirty million dollars in twenty twenty-two. Some projects, the big one obviously being Fire Station Number One, some renewal work at the Nanaimo Aquatic Center, some huge property acquisitions, as you saw in the slide where I was, I was talking about property acquisitions through the strategic plan update, some work on the waterfront walkway, the Georgie Avenue Greenway and the Chase River Palm Station that will be upsizing so we can take care of increased demand on our capacity. So what's next? And I did allude to these dates and they are very important because this is where we will engage with members of the public. December fourth at seven P M. We'll be here and we'll have our e-town hall then. We'll also have another workshop at the finance and audit, that's on the morning of December seventh. And we are hoping that we can bring the financial plan bylaw for twenty eighteen to twenty twenty-two to the December eighteen, twenty seventeen meeting for your consideration. Members of the public can email us, we have an email budgets@nanaimo.ca, budget@nanaimo.ca if you have any questions, we will be meaning that and responding through that for those who can't make it to any of those three meetings that we've put up upfront. That concludes my short presentation, Your Worship.
Thank you very much. Questions, Mr. Councillor Hong?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Memma, for your presentation. I got a couple of questions here, if you don't mind. First one, I guess I'll work backwards because my mind is fresher that way. December the eighteenth, why are we adopting the bylaw when we don't have to do it until May? Like, so are we saying that once we adopt this bylaw, then we can't change it? Are we going to have to amend the bylaw like we usually do or are we rushing this? So we're getting it done before December, like what's the rush between the eighteenth and if we can't do it in January if we adopt the bylaw?
So one of the good changes that you have allowed us to do in the past three years is to have an approved budget in place by this by January first. What that means is that we can begin to work on our plans early in the year and we would like to continue with that process. The intent is not to rush anything, the intent is for us to be able to, to be able to implement coming January first. If we don't do that, what it means is we lose a quarter of the year waiting for for this to be approved. And so we are hoping that we can continue that as a best practice. The the good news is that adoption of a bylaw doesn't mean you can't come back and change it. You can amend it at any time. In fact, I'll be bringing back an amendment of the twenty seventeen, twenty twenty-one financial plan bylaw for amendment on the, on the next, at the next council meeting.
And so just to follow up on that, the reason I I ask that is because, you know, on the assumption that everything goes the way it's going to go, two point six isn't bad, but we don't know what's going to happen at the RDN. So that two point six could kind of add up to that. We don't know what the assessments are going to be. They can either be a lot lower than what we're projecting at one point two million. So I like when I'm giving a number to the public that we're going to approve, I like to be at least ninety percent sure of what we're going to do with some changes. So I understand and and I like that we don't have to do this provisional budget like we used to, but it's still, I like the public to know and that we, you know, and tell up to me that we can still change it because of what B C assessment does and what we do at the RDN because the public doesn't know that. So and then for them to go off and saying that it's only going to be two point six and they get end up getting upset with us because it was a lot higher because of the RDN and and these other factors that take into play. Can I follow the next question or others?
There are others.
Well, I can come back. I got a lot of other questions.
Yeah, Councillor Kip.
Thank you, that was, one of my points is that being spending compliant and I think this addresses Councillor Hong's issue. Their May fifteenth date is basically because we are a tax collector through those requisitions for the school district, RDN, library, hospital funds that come through the RDN. So we have to be spending compliant on our budget. So I actually like the idea, this is what our Nanaimo budget is. As I've said before, though, I want to see those other figures in there of what we are. And we do have them at our fingertips tomorrow at the RDN. We'll find, well, we have a budget, a proposed budget there too. So from my perspective, I like this. I like to hear that our council has taken some five point five million down from taxation, which is good over a period of time. The cost pressure we've had has been, you know, it's been intense. So from my perspective, I really like this. I like the idea that we're putting our Nanaimo budget on the table in December so that staff can start to implement the plans instead of having that May fifteenth. And I guess it's up to us to help at the RDN is to set some of those numbers at the RDN and get them here before May fifteenth so we can finalize that. So I appreciate what staff has done on this and I like the idea that we're building some things. Thank you.
Thank you. Mr. Memma, can you take it back to the revenue slide, please? Okay, so in my conversations with members of the community, one of the, one of the biggest challenges that we see is that, is that a lack of understanding of where the revenue comes from. And the sixty, sixty-eight percent that I see there, that's use, that's, that's taxation alone.
That's property taxes, yes.
Right, so if you take, and what is that number this year? Projected, around ninety-five?
About, yeah, about just under nine hundred.
Okay, so when we're looking at our, if we look at the others, licenses, charges, fees and so on and so forth, but the one we don't see in there is other government. Other government and grants.
So other government grants, obviously, those, those would be, they're, they're basic, they're not many. When you get them, they are capital in nature. So the, when you're looking at grants from, from other governments, they are, they are one-offs to a particular project, so we don't necessarily get ongoing for operations.
Do you have a slide that shows, that shows operating and capital?
So this slide does, it does show operating and capital, yes.
When I looked at the, the previous financial reports, I was trying to explain it to somebody and and in, you know, in a hundred, hundred and seventy-two million dollars for that year, I think it was two thousand and fifteen, there was a suggest, you know, there was confusion around what that number actually meant.
Okay.
And and I think if people understand that the only surety we have are the things that we see there. So if we've got capital projects going out there that we could use out of this year's, out of, out of a, out of a grant, for example, from, from a federal or provincial government, that, for example, if we found two point six million dollars that just landed at our lap from a senior level of government, we could dedicate that to a, to a, to a project, a capital project.
That's correct.
Right, so the only thing sure are taxes and
and user fees.
And death. Thank you. Councillor Hong?
Others can go before me if you want to bump me off.
Councillor Beswick?
Thank you. Thank you very much, Mr. Memma, I appreciate this information and I'm a strong advocate and have been for many years that we become closer to completion of our next year's annual operating budget before we get into that year, or at least very deep into that year. It's, in my humble opinion, it's extremely critical that we do. So thank you very much for advancing this last quarter to represent that. I just have a quick question and one of those would, well, are we on a one-question process?
I didn't suggest that.
No, I'm just asking, are we on, because Councillor Hong asked one question and then deferred, so I just don't know.
I, I think he wants to get everybody to have a chance to have a question.
Perfect, well, thank you very much for that. Could you please explain for me what the enterprise content management? Could you, could you please explain for me what that is? What is enterprise content management?
So I'll, I'll let the city clerk respond to to that description and and then I can add if, if, if she allows me. Thank you.
Thank you, worship, through you to Councillor Beswick. Enterprise content management is a, a program that was discussed at a committee of a whole for records management. So it's a, a program that, a software program that the city would have that would manage and secure all of the records management in an electronic format. It would classify it and look after the retention schedule and security of all of the records of the city of Nanaimo.
Thank you for that, appreciate it. My second question is Perfect Mind to replace class. My second question is Perfect Mind to replace Class. So we connected with 17 other communities around the province to advance this initiative. And are we fully turned over to Perfect Mind in all of our facilities, or are we not turned over?
So I'll let Mr. Harding speak to that.
Currently, we're, we're still in Class, and so now we're starting the, the process of doing that integration over 2018. We're hopes that everything will go live August 2018 for the public, so everything will switch over there. All our bookings and our programming, everything will go live in August.
Thank you. So just a quick follow-up to that. So is the largest portion of Perfect Mind the investment in the physicalness of the program, or is it in the application and training to go live?
It would be the, majority of it is the purchase of the rights for, for Perfect Mind. It's a cloud-based system, so you, most of it's that, but there is a number of training and the transitional time this year in that part of it.
Thank you very much. And I just have one last question, if I may. Not to you, Mr. Harding. Mr. Memma, I just have one question for you, and this is my last question, is in your undertaking of the 2018-2022 financial plan, what direction was provided to depart, to department heads to return to the financial department with budget preparations for their respective areas? Was it come back with a net-net gain if there's a revenue portion of their departments? Was it to reduce wherever possible without impacting service levels? Was, was there a direction, and just for example, the Parks and Rec Department has a $25 million plus or minus operating budget, approximately $8 million plus or minus is revenue. And this year, our expenses over revenues are up for 2018, that is. So I'm just curious, did, was there a direction provided to reduce the 24.5 million dollars by 1%, which isn't a whole lot, and the $24 million, or increase the revenue by 1% on 800,000, which, or find places that there might be opportunities for a net-net gain?
So I'll let the city clerk speak to that, but I'll start off by saying, the instruction asked for a neutral budget, not necessarily a status quo, but a cost-neutral budget in, in, in most respect, and then to come back with business cases to justify any increases that any department would, would have. So those were kind of like the, the basic instructions that were given. In, in terms of revenue, we, we are somewhat shied back, we are, we are behind on the general user fee review program, and we would have thought that by now we'd have received the report. And what we learnt as we went through that process is the model that is being used to assess us is a little bit demanding, and rightfully so, where we are being asked to determine from a work demand, where we say, if I'm processing a business license application, how, how long, what's the cost of doing that in terms of time, in terms of resources? And that has taken a little bit of time, because that's going to help us, or at least understand our capacity to do that work, and also our resource allocation to do that. The only change in user fees that we've allowed for here is, is a, an inflation increase in Parks and Recs. But Parks and Recs, their, their fees actually get implemented in September, I think. And, and so the, the full impact of that is not going to be in 2018. Out of that $23 million budget, the full impact of that increase is, is, is less than 50,000. So we'll see that full impact in, in 2018. I'm sure city manager may have no other comments to make.
Certainly. I, I think what we're seeing here is in 2015, when the CFO joined the city of Nanaimo, he took some leadership decisions about changing the cycle for budget planning and pushing it up earlier in the year, so we were adopting a budget at fiscal year-end, because our fiscal year is January 1 to December 31st. So those changes have taken a couple of years to roll out. So we're changing how we do our budgets. And what you raise is the potential for managing budgets, and I, I've said this before, when I was with the federal government, on an annual basis, we needed to find 4% of our budget to offer up to the decision-makers on how they may want to reallocate that differently across the regional office, or differently across the department, or in some cases, cuts to the overall department. We have not engaged at that level, because there's other things that need to be done first. And the core services review is pretty clear on this. There is a need to adopt a fiscal policy suite to assist us in the budget process and planning our budget. So there's things that we can do now that will find efficiencies, that'll find ways of saving money in our budget without touching service levels, without touching stabbing levels, without making those types of cuts, but simply looking more critically at how we plan our annual budget and what we put in from year to year. The example I gave you a couple of weeks ago was with capital projects. So we're still changing our process, and now this time, we had everybody come forward and present their budgets and talk about what it is they wanted to do, and that permitted both the CFO and myself to question them and go, well, what's your business case between asking for 150,000 to this, to do this study? You know, is, can it be done in a different way? And is this study similar to that study? Or what projects are we going to be working on? So it allowed us to have that type of conversation, to see where to recommend to council where we should invest monies. But certainly, I think going forward, there will be an opportunity to say on an annual basis, can you look for 1%? Because maybe you want to invest 1% more per year in your social wellness. So looking in other programming areas with really specific instructions from council, we can look at finding monies. But what's important to note is that we haven't asked for any service level cuts, we haven't asked for stabbing cuts either at the exempt or unionized level. We've looked more critically at our business cases supporting the money that they're asking you to allocate. And we've had to make some corrections to how we've done the budget in the past, things that were in the capital budget ought not to have been in the capital budget are more properly placed in the operating budget. So as we work through this with staff, and we look at the implementation recommendations from the core services and other expert consultants who are telling us, here's how you can make improvements, here's how you can get efficiencies, this is Victor and I coming up with these findings, these are from independent third parties saying, here's how to better plan and better manage money, and that's moving forward to you.
Councillor Hong.
Thank you. Back to a couple of other questions I have, Mr. Memma. First of all, you talked about property acquisition as one of our initiatives, and you said that we had a goal of trying to get to $1 million. So in the 2018 budget, it's still $600,000, it's not a million? Or has it been increased to a million?
It's, it's still 600.
So we haven't added that? Okay, thank you. This water thing is always gets to me, especially when landfill is coming up, but why has it gone up with water? Are, are people consuming less water now? Is that why we have to, shouldn't that be kind of cost-neutral? Or where, where are we at with water? And why has it increased? Are people using less water? Are they using more water?
So I'll, I'll let Mr. Elliot speak to, to that question.
Thank you.
Through the chair, the water consumption rates are progressively going down. We, we saw an increase through the 70s and 80s, and, and since then, we've been reducing water consumption, and that's through a myriad of, of conservation methods that the city of Nanaimo and the regional district have worked together on. And so, no, it's, it's not an increase. I think those rates were established when the water treatment plant came into being, was to increase those on a regular basis, and it's to have a more realistic cost of water, of the cost of the service of the water. It is a utility, and it's self-providing for the, the cost of the utility.
Great. Thank you. That's what I wanted to know, is that we aren't wasting water.
No, clearly, we're, we're, I think we're around mid-70s at consumption level, so we've, we have gone up and subsided, and people are, are using water much more wisely.
Thank you. So a couple more, so hopefully that prolongs the need for increasing our dam by a couple years, I hope. The next one I have is, the Deloitte report says that we should plan our projects more carefully, and there was a lot of carryforward. So my question is, I got three questions. First one was the public sector of building the fire station. We're budgeting 3, 3.5 million according to your slide in 2018. Well, obviously, we're not building anything, but why are we still spending 3.5 million? Is that just the design phase of it? That seems like a lot of money to build a $16 million project if we're spending that amount.
So it's the design, it's the design phase. I'm not sure if there's anybody to speak to that, but it's the design phase in 2018.
So I don't know how long design phases take, but I'm hoping that we're, I, I know that our fire chief, Ms. Frye, has worked on a group to come up with the best possible option, and I'm hoping that she's going to come back to council with that option of what is happening and what the building might look like, could look like. Others might be involved, might not, I don't know, before we make this decision, because I don't want to be spending on something and then realize that, oh, well, maybe the ambulance people are going to finally step up. And maybe the RCMP, since we need to have a safe place for them as well in this post-earthquake situation, that we should have a space for some of their facilities, because if I'm not mistaken, we're renting the building next to them for the RCMP, and that building is pretty old. So if we can maximize everything and, and gain rent, I, I love generating revenue from a building. If we can do that, and not specifically just for the fire station themselves, it makes more sense for, for us to build a super facility that houses all emergency, not all, but enough emergency personnel. So I, I'm leery about spending that much money in 2018. I don't think that's going to happen. I like to push that back to 20, start the design, but I don't think that's going to happen, because at Deloitte, I'm hoping that we're going to see what that process comes out. And then that, to follow up with that, is the waterfront walkway in 2018. I don't know how we're going to spend $4.8 million on that, because the biggest chunk, the most expensive chunk is going to be the water, the downtown part at this point, to get that done. And I don't know how long it takes to talk to fisheries and SFN. Apparently, at this time, we're not really on good terms. So I don't even know how long it's going to take us to work through these to get the approvals to actually build anything. I know that the Stewart Avenue part is pretty easy for us to do, so I'm leery on, I'd like to see what Deloitte, those recommendations have to do with spending $4.8 million in 2018, because I think that should be pushed, if I'm not mistaken, so we're not doing this carryforward. And the last one was number one Port Drive. In 2018, we're spending 1.8 million, 2019, 2.1, and 2020, 2 million. I'm assuming that's the road construction itself.
So, so the numbers I gave you is, is a combination of a number of initiatives in that area. And if I can find it here. So you, you have the Wilcox access, yes, is one aspect of that, the master plan, which we've just completed. I think it's the Wilcox that's the, the access that's going to be.
Okay, that's perfect. So, and I think, I don't know if that's going to carry to 2020 for that road. What was the, the trestle replacement value at? Because that.
We're trying to, Worship, sorry. We're trying to avoid doing specific line items for each capital project, so that when we go out for tender, we get the best price.
Yeah.
But the downtown waterfront includes the primary access, which is the extension of Front Street, and completion of the secondary access study, which is a second access to the waterfront property, and that report should be coming before council soon. Yeah. And with the Fire Hall, the answer to that question is, there's a number of things planned in terms of preparation work in 2018, but because we're going to be using this as a pilot project for the Deloitte recommendations, we do plan to come back to council and go, here's the design of the process we propose to use to make decisions as we move forward through this project, and get your feedback and approval of the new capital management project system.
Great, thank you. And I just want to make clear that we're not building the trestle, right? That's what I'm trying to get at. We're not going to rebuild that trestle.
No.
Because I just want to know if that was budgeted in here or not? Because whether we have made the decision or not, if it needs to be done, where, where is it in these budget items, whether this council changes?
Mr. Serber.
So the secondary access study will be completed, and it has identified, I think, the top two or three options for providing secondary access, and that will be brought before council, and you'll make a decision and give direction to staff.
But my point again is, is not budgeted.
The construction.
The report is budgeted, but not the actual building of that road or access, whatever it is.
I think the design aspect has been included in the budget, not the construction of whatever option is that you choose.
Yeah, that's the question. Thank you.
So perhaps we can get clarification. It was always my understanding that we're not building another trestle.
No.
We're not building another trestle, period.
Yeah. Just wanted to make that.
That we, that we were prepared to go to, we were prepared to do the new waterfront roadway, and that's what this is about. Now we're also talking about a secondary access.
Yeah, thank you.
Councillor Armstrong.
Yes, Mr. Memma, I just want to know, is the Northfield Exchange included in the 2018 budget, the upgrades to Northfield?
The right gentleman is I here?
Thank you.
Through you, Worship, to councillor Armstrong. Northfield Boundary is budgeted in 2017.
2017.
So we have a tender out right now, and subject to that being successful, we, we'll be proceeding with it early in 2018.
Thank you.
Thank you. Councillor Kip.
Thank you very much. Yeah, I'm interested in the new design and the new design ideas that the city's coming up with. I guess one that comes to mind is the number one reservoir in Energy Building. I found it was built with bricks imported, it was going to be bubbled stainless steel, bypass doors, it's beautiful wood beams in the building, and I think it should be an industrial standard building up in the way up to the thing. It's nice to have it in the park, I mean, there we are, taking the park out, and we're putting in a, a building that, the finish was over the top. And I hope when they're designing the Fire Hall, they're looking at the risks associated with building the Fire Hall in that area. If the train tracks are still there and the propane's going by, the police station's a beautiful site for a bomb to land on, so why are we putting the Fire Hall right next to that type of stuff? And is that the appropriate place to pull out? Or is this waterfront land down here maybe where we should be putting the Fire Hall? Because that's where most of our stuff is, and of course, it might fall into the swamp down there. So these design committees and a new process in that, I've had concerns with them for a while now. The Colery Dam was a huge build that I didn't agree with. Some of these things that are going on now, the, the quotations, the old contracts, and I'm still trying to drive and, and get twisted to find out what the truth is on them. It's frustrating to me. And we changed it from the trestle reconstruction to the Wilcox access because of that a long time ago, the walkway. And I, I'm concerned, of course, with only getting 40% of our work done by some of these projects. So it's a tough one for me. When I, when I see these projects hitting the table, I know that number one building is falling apart. I've been into the back corridors of it a number of times, and it's been falling apart for a long time. But is that the location? And I said a long time ago, a building with a communication center, instead of sending it over to Vancouver or being able to fill in for them, Starbucks or Timmy Horton's in it to make revenue, and, and put it someplace where we can share resources, and I hope to have some input into that as a councillor. I hate when these things just land on my table. With some of my background, I like to see these things, and of course, they land on our table like this presentation. This is the simple little things I like, instead of reams of paper. And so it's frustrating. So from my perspective, this Fire Hall and who's the team on it? What's their track record for construction? Who's, who's leading this that has that construction background? They may know a fire, they may know how to put the wet stuff on the red stuff, but designing a building, there's a few guys in there that can design buildings, I know that, they do that on the side. So from my perspective, I just want to make sure council's involved in some of this stuff too. too. And I've asked for three years or four years, how does council get involved in making the motions so buildings are built to suit a standard of construction? So please, someone get that answer to me. If it needs a motion that we want to put in, that I'll, I'll put a motion forward that we look at how buildings are designed in our city. I'm tired of building icons that are really, really expensive and don't function well. Station four, station two, the building out beside it where the doors didn't fit. So it's been going on for a while and it has to change, and I hope to get some insight into it. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Semmer.
Oh, sorry.
I wonder if I could, Mr. Memma, on that one there, did we not, as a council, already approve the replacement of the number one Fire Hall building?
The, the motion in the books was, you received some reports about location and response. And then I think the motion was that staff must bring this back in the 2018 financial plan. So that's what we're doing now.
With respect to those two properties, we've made decision?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. But I do also, Counselor, Counselor, I have the floor.
Yeah.
Counselor.
You need the whole meeting.
Counselor.
More like...
Counselor, I have the floor.
More flowing.
Counselor.
Thank you.
Mr. Memma. So on the, I, I understand what Counselor Kip is talking about. If we look at two schools that were built almost at the same time, very, very different construction standards, Port Alberni and Surrey. The Surrey School was extremely utilitarian. It was, it was corrugated metal, very modern, et cetera, et cetera. The other one in Port Alberni was very, was a lot of wood. And I under, I completely understand what Counselor Kip is saying. When does council, or are we better off to look at it far beyond we get to the design stage as to what kind of building we want?
So I think this is a, I think the exercise in Fire Hall number one is a live example of the process that Deloitte identified that could be improved in how we do it. And council had a choice of deciding to either repair Fire Hall number one or replace it. And I think that there's an additional step after you made the choice that you wanted to replace it instead of repair it. There is the opportunity to, for staff to come back to council and go, okay, if we're replacing, here's some scope on what could be done. I know the report came forward and gave you that information, but after you made that initial decision, it should come back to council to take a look at it, to make sure that you're comfortable with what we're going out to an RFP and how we're going to spend the $3.5 million. And it isn't just on design, it's on some site preparation and other things that have to take place like demolition. But I think that that, that is how we'll proceed on, on major projects like this where input from the elected officials, I think, is, is a prudent thing to get before we invest 17, 20 million dollars. So I think sort of a hybrid, you know, we brought Event Center back to you many times, so you had a lot of input to it. So other major projects like this, I think it would be a, a best practice to do so.
Thank you very much. I see no further questions.
No, 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 I'm sorry.
You back?
Yeah.
Counselor Kip, you have the floor.
You took me off, thank you. Yeah, well, with this design of that building, like, if we're building maybe in Hammond Bay one day here soon, if we're building in downtown Nanaimo, if we're going to build out in the Westwood Lake area, if we're going to build down on the waterfront, I think the structure should become too individual, too self-designed for each location. And the function of the building is a Fire Hall and a response and, and a place to do that with. So from my perspective, the business plan issue I've been raising long before Deloitte. And Deloitte's nice to have on the table and before core review and things like that. So for me, that's why council doesn't get to drive some of these projects over time. And I, I heard the mayor the other day say, well, don't we just tell you that we want this done and give you the money and go ahead and get it? And that was just the other day. So I don't understand if you understand what I'm saying here. What I'm saying is these halls, if, if they are a responsibility, just like a school, maybe the schools start to become not institutional, but nice schools with, with wholesome construction in them. So I'd rather spend that money on big wooden beams and, and beautiful glass and interiors that shine on a school or a, a conference room that has things in it, not a, a reservoir building that has a standard of finish beyond what needed to be done in that building. So I don't know if council does understand me when I, when I talk about these things. And so from my perspective, when I hear at one point, well, we, haven't we just told staff to do that and go ahead and do it? Well, if we made a mistake, we correct it, I think. Or if we, we thought, because the business plans from Deloitte and things like that are showing that, and, and what's different in the system now? The same people, but you're just changing the forms? But is the thought pattern still there? Is the culture still embedded? Is the system still embedded? And that's my concern with these, your worship. So thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir. So the next item on the agenda under presentations is Mr. Kevin Shaw.
Good evening, Kevin Shaw in Nanaimo. The Victoria Crescent Association staged a number of well-attended events this summer and fall. It started off in July with our two-day, the Bathtub Street Fair, our portion of it on Victoria Crescent, very successful. Then we went on and had a, had a Fresh Start Day, which was gathering pens, paper, books, and knapsacks for kids that needed them to go back to school. We also held a downtown scavenger hunt to have businesses downtown, interact with each other, get out there, have some fun, meet each other, and see our downtown. A Halloween trick-or-treat where we had about 300 kids, I guess, came to the various businesses in our neighborhood. And on Saturday, this coming Saturday, right before the Santa Claus Parade, which starts at 5 o'clock through downtown Nanaimo, we on the Crescent are going to have a small tree light up. We'll have some hot chocolate, some festive cookies, some holiday music, and everybody is invited to attend that. And then the parade, of course, at 5 o'clock. But tonight, I would like to thank very much, and I deeply mean this, the City of Nanaimo for helping us create a better neighborhood. And on, in August, on August the 26th, we held our very first Crescent Day, we called it, which was a day-long event where we had a bouncy castle, giant slide, a couple of bands played, balloons, kids' games, et cetera. And that night, we had a crazy, wacky pro wrestling match, which I had previously invited any of you to attend, but I didn't see any of you there as takers in the ring. But it was very successful. And I would just like to thank the City of Nanaimo for helping us in the events that we've staged and for the help you've given us. So this is our certificate of appreciation from us to you and the very best this holiday season. Thank you.
Thank you very much, sir.
Good job, David.
Next item, under Corporate Services, is the draft 2018 to 2022 financial plan to be introduced by Mr. Memma.
Thank you, worship. That's just a report that summarizes what I just presented to you. Thank you.
Great. There's a recommendation on page three of the addendum. Is there someone prepared to move the recommendation? Move the recommendation. And moved by Counselor Thorpe, seconded by Counselor Bestrick. And the recommendation reads that council receive the draft 2018 to 2022 Financial Report Plan for Information. And two, that council direct staff to commence a period of public engagement on the draft 2018 to 2022 financial plan ahead of formal consideration at the December 18th council meeting discussion. Seeing none, call the question. All those in favor? Opposed, motion carries. Next item is draft Maffal Sutton Master Plan Update to be introduced by Mr. Richard Harding, Director of Parks and Recreation. And the purpose is to present the draft Maffal Sutton Park Master Plan Update.
Could you up there? Could you up there here?
Just very pleased to introduce the draft Maffal Sutton Master Plan. It's been a while, we've been trying to, wanting to get in front of you, and we're finally here. Kirsten McDonald, our Parks Planner, who led the process, is going to do a presentation for you. Our goal really is just to introduce it to you, go through the presentation, and if council agrees, is to start a final public input of the, of the, of the plan, get it out to the public, and also forward it if council chooses to some of council's standing committees. I will introduce Kirsten McDonald. Our Parks Planner will go through the presentation.
Go ahead, you're on.
Thank you. As Richard said, we're really just here to introduce the draft Maffal Sutton Master Plan to you. But through the presentation, we will be outlining why the plan was completed, what the process was to do that, and what the community engagement included. Outline really a flexible framework, which is the vision in the plan, and some of the implementation actions.
You tell me when.
So for our study area, we've really been looking at the western edge at Georgia Park, looking at pretty much from the Pacifica, the Pacific Sails development, all the way through Maffal Sutton Park and the outer waterfront walkway to the area around the Yacht Club. So just outside of the image on the screen. To set the stage, Maffal Sutton Park is in the Tsunamoo First Nations Territory, and it has a very rich history. There are two villages that have been known to exist on the Millstone River, and there are still two archaeological sites within the park. To date, several archaeological surveys have been done of, of the, of the park and the study area. And previous construction work in the park has unearthed many features of archaeological significance. Most of those are at the museum, as well as on the reserve at the moment, and over 300 archaeological artifacts have been found in previous, previous stages of the plan. Most of you probably know that this is a fill site, and the original shoreline actually was around the Civic Arena that you can see in the 1960s image there along the roof line. Filling has really been happening on this site since the 40s. And on the slide, looking since 1962 to present day, you can see the extent of how the park has changed over time. The park was really never designed for the uses that it is currently seeing, and it has been developed over the years in a fairly piecemeal way. It currently is a gateway to the downtown and the Nanaimo waterfront, and it's a focal point for community gathering and special events. Right now, it is Zone PRC III, which supports a diversity of uses. And because of the past work on the site, it has had a number of geotechnical and contaminated sites, studies that have previously been done on it. So Maffal Sutton Park did have a master plan completed in 2008. Following plan adoption, the Spirit Square opened in 2009 and was a first phase of, of that plan. But since then, council has asked us to, to look at it again and see if it still meets community need. This ensures that the new draft is consistent with the city's strategic plan update and, and current community needs. It also takes in consideration 2.3 acres that have been added to the park. And that primarily is what you see in the image on the screen in the parking lot, just tugging the estuary of the Millstone River. Also, taken into consideration in this plan update have been the changing downtown context, some environmental factors, and increased collaboration with First Nations. The plan update is intended to be a flexible guiding document for future improvements and development of the park. So in 2009, a Spirit Square was constructed in the park largely with some, with city funding, as well as provincial government grants. And just to highlight what was completed, it, it is a large multipurpose plaza for special events. But it also featured a lot of unique amenities that are not found in other parks in North America. And just for your information, those included tent tie-downs to help allow event organizers to set up, potable water at street grates, as well as a myriad of underground services, mostly electrical. Pretty much, you can pull up your, your vendor cart or your generator and hook it into any of the street grates that are in the park. There also are a number of custom catch basin covers, a public art gallery wall, and a sany dump for vendors. You may also have noticed that there is a weaving paving pattern through the plaza, and that is actually demarking the existing shoreline or the original shoreline and the fill line. So as you're walking through there, it, it just remembers what, what used to be. So to complete this plan update, there's been a significant amount of community engagement. There's been two online surveys with over 1,000 respondents. We have held five input sessions in the park. For one summer, there was a participatory flag display on the bridges in the park, and people were able to have an ongoing dialogue as they were walking by writing ideas on the flags. And over 1,000 unique ideas were written on those flags. And there were over 14 community groups that participated in stakeholder interviews. Throughout the process, we have also opened up a dialogue with Tsunamoo First Nations and have tried to collaborate with them on the, the business plan for Newcastle Island, as well as development plans for their properties on the corner of Comox and Cliff Street, so that the park and the First Nations development are, are consistent with each other. And we hope to have an ongoing dialogue and partnership with them as the actions are implemented that are outlined in this plan. So some key findings to highlight for you that came through the community engagement include a desire from the community to expand the waterfront walkway. That's not, not a surprise. But to also integrate what we have in Maffal Sutton Park to some external trail systems, including the potential to have connections up the Millstone River to Bowen Park. And that was actually the number one request, was to have connections up to Bowen Park along the Millstone River. There's also a desire to have additional washroom facilities in the park and an improved, improved washroom, as well as satellite facilities along the waterfront walkway. Also a desire to utilize Swailana Lagoon more and have it opened up so that it's easier to access, as well as integrated more into the physical elements of the park. Also a desire to not only be able to look at our fantastic harbor, but also to have locations where people can touch the water and actually get down and access it, whether that be through piers or stepped facilities. Definitely a desire to enhance the facilities for youth, so playgrounds as well as other youth amenities. Public art was also a, a theme. There's quite a successful public art program in the park right now, but continuing that along the waterfront walkway, as well as more in the park. Having enhanced connections to Newcastle Island, enhancing event and performance spaces, and also looking at parking. So as a compilation of the community engagement and the study that we have done, a vision statement has been developed for Maffal Sutton Park. And this is really intended to be a, a guiding element for the next 15 years. And it states, "Maffal Sutton Park is a dynamic citywide and regional destination for recreation, waterfront access, and special events. It is Nanaimo's premier waterfront park and will continue to provide high-quality park facilities and trails, act as a downtown and waterfront gateway, and host events and community gatherings for years to come." So this slide is a view of what's page 30 on the, the document that I know you have. And it's, it's difficult to read, but I'm going to be breaking it down into layers so we can see all the different components that are included in the schematic site vision. Again, this is intended to be a flexible framework to guide park development and is based on the project vision. Again, this is intended to be a flexible framework to guide park development and is based on the project vision. So this first slide really outlines existing amenities that are intended to be improved in the park, and they include the Lions Pavilion, as well as the Playground. And the Playground is really at the end of its life. It's a very popular destination for families, and a lot of people do come and spend the whole day down in Mefaeo Sutton Park and along the waterfront walkway. And that's one of the reasons that it is such a special place for a lot of people. But that is one of the elements that we're looking to highlight as something that we can improve in the short term. And there's some community partners that are emerging to partner with us on that, and they will be speaking in support of this plan tonight. And the Lions Pavilion and the surrounding lawn, event lawn that are around it, are also very popular for smaller events in the park. But unfortunately, the feedback we are getting from a lot of the users is that the sound quality and also the viewing quality are somewhat lacking, and there are some baffling systems and some other ways that we can enhance that so that it has less of a tin can effect in that as a performance space. And this slide outlines a location near Swailana Lagoon, which is really the hub of the park, that could have a new washroom building built into it, an amenity building, we're calling it, because it could house more than just washrooms, but really be a multipurpose, have some multipurpose functions, including storage for events, possibly having a permanent concession, and definitely having expanded washroom facilities. In the past, we have been looking at tripling the women's and doubling the men's facilities to help really support the growing use in the park. In addition, to be consistent with waterfront walkway plans, we are proposing some new trail locations through the park that help facilitate cycling, both recreational and commuter cycling, up onto Front Street and joining other bike networks, as well as looking at widening some of the internal trails so that they can accommodate multiple uses and the growing number of people that really are visiting the park. And also, as mentioned, a desire to have a trail connection up the Millstone Greenway as well. On the next slide, this is really illustrating the opportunity to have habitat enhancement in various locations along the perimeter walkway and the Millstone Estuary, as well as having locations built into the park where people can touch the water through piers and stepped areas. It also shows how Swailana Lagoon, really the beach, is in the very center of the park, and definitely opportunities to pull back the existing retaining wall that is there and really bring the beach into the Spirit Square and have it as a central feature in the park that helps to facilitate use of the lagoon for recreation and also soften the Spirit Square. And lastly, this is looking at opportunities to terrace some of the sloped banks that are along the Queen Elizabeth Promenade and Georgia Park, and really allow them to be features in the park for seating and harbor viewing, as well as some opportunities to look at efficiencies in existing parking areas and the potential for a future parking structure to accommodate the growing use in the park. So the Mefaeo Sutton Master Plan update is a vision that requires some substantial funding and partnerships. It is really envisioned that this would be probably a 15-year process to implement most of the projects that are outlined in it. And the availability of funding and partnerships would come from a variety of sources. The goal of the plan has been to keep it flexible, though, so that when opportunities exist, we are ready to collaborate with partners that may come up and try to keep lower-cost items in the initial phases, and some of the longer-term elements with higher costs would be reflected in future capital plans. Some of the projects that could be completed in the short term, as I mentioned, the Mefaeo Sutton Playground is falling short of meeting safety standards, but it is a destination for families, and there's been a growing desire to create this, because it is, Mefaeo Sutton Park is Nanaimo's premier waterfront park, really, to have a playground down there that is a signature playground in Nanaimo and can meet the needs of an inclusive population, as well as all ages that are in the park, and to try and make it one of the gathering places that really is a hub in the park. And we will be talking about that a little bit more with a couple of the delegations, but there are some partnerships emerging to help that happen. The city does have capital plans set aside for that in 2018, so it could be something that a Phase One is done in the short term to complete. There's also opportunities for us to open up the beach near the Queen Elizabeth, or sorry, near the Yacht Club along the Queen Elizabeth Promenade and make it a more accessible beach and allow, really, to get down below the seawall and access that area of the water, which is cut off right now. And that's something that could be done in the short term, as well as starting to look at ways to open up Swailana Lagoon and making it more of an accessible beach within the heart of the park, and looking at enhancing the Lions Pavilion for special events in the short term. Those could begin in 2018 and 2019 and are already reflected in some of the capital planning. Longer term, some of the projects outlined require quite a bit of design and collaboration with contextual developers and projects. One of the longer-term projects that could start, at least in design, in the shorter term would be looking at the amenity building and the washroom and the needs of Nanaimo for a permanent vendor and expanded washroom facilities, both in the park and along the waterfront walkway. The Millstone Greenway and achieving that also requires quite a bit of funding and looking at longer-term designing, as well as bank terracing and the consideration of a parking structure. So in conclusion, the Mefaeo Sutton Master Plan update is a visioning document and is intended to be a flexible land use concept plan and framework that allows for improvement options over the long term. It complements other policies and initiatives that the city has in place, such as waterfront walkway planning. And staff are really recommending that, we really want this to just be an introduction to you, so we're recommending that this draft master plan is referred to the Parks Recreation and Wellness Committee, as well as the Community Vitality Committee for Input. We'd also like to put it on the city's website and invite the public to provide additional feedback to it over time. And that could be probably coming back as a next step in the early New Year and bringing it forward to council. But over the next couple of months, going out, testing it with the public through the website, and also putting some signage on site, as well as using social media to gauge the final draft and the reception of that.
Thank you very much. Questions? Counselor Hong.
Thank you. Thank you for the presentation. Excited that we're going to finally do something with Mefaeo and finish this project. I know it's a work in progress, but with what we're doing with SFN and the access to Newcastle, one of the biggest complaints that we get are people trying to get there to go camping. In your discussions, you didn't present anything about an access road or a drop-off point, so nobody has to carry the gear to the ferry. So was that a concern? I didn't hear that from your presentation, so is that going to be something that you will discuss?
I can answer that. So in the old days, there used to be a road out there, but now that the park is such a pedestrian concentrated area, we've really discouraged that over the years. So we found different, trying to find different ways to work with SFN and others for Newcastle, to find more direct ways to it. Really, the long term, though, is to find other, is to continue with that, with the wharf of it's there now, and improve some accesses, pedestrian accesses, but then also find other locations where operators can get people over, either using, you know, picking people up at the wreck of boat ramp or downtown Inner Harbor, other locations. I think the days, unless it comes back from the public and council wants to do otherwise, the days of trucks and stuff, going out, driving out there through that highly pedestrian area, it's very difficult, particularly now we have, we have 180 special events down there a year. And so some of those weekends, it's just, it's just, we're just asking for a lot of trouble to be encouraging the kind of transportation out there.
Thank you. So in the follow-up on that point, would it be possible to move the dock to kind of closer to the Millstone River and just go off, you know, in that southern part of, or eastern or whatever, whatever you call it, part of the river? Because I think that would solve a lot, I don't know the logistics of actually moving a dock.
It's a mud, it drains, sorry.
Yeah. So I, well, yeah, I figure with something like that, if it went out far enough, I think it would be a good thing if we're not using this for traffic. And because that was one of the complaints that people do when they try to go camping over there. It's difficult to get their stuff there, and when you get there, then you have to wheelbarrow it another, you know, half a kilometer or so to your campsite. And then to follow up on that, I know that we're talking about the lagoon. This summer, we had a huge algae problem there. What are we going to do to solve that problem? Because it was really ugly. You couldn't really swim in it. Like, is that, that's something short-term I would like to see. I know that we took off the water, we used to flow down and, you know, give oxygen to the water, but we took that away. Now it's nice planters. So I'm hoping that that's going to be a discussion plan, because I had a lot of concerns from residents that were walking that, to see that algae, it was just gross. And then the next thing was, with regards to the Lions Pavilion, what's our plan? Are we just going to keep it, put some baffling in there? Are we actually going to redesign it, kind of rebuild it and just rename it the Lions Pavilion? Because I like what they did at Transfer Beach, that ban shell kind of thing, kind of what we have at Bowen Park. It was really kind of cool. So I don't know at what stage, because everything I see here seems like we're going to keep that structure, but it doesn't seem to really make any sense. Thank you.
Do you want me to answer any of those? Yeah, on the algae, we're, so we're continually monitoring the water aspects there. That was, as far as I can tell, a unique year, and so we're going to continue to follow that and see what's going on with that component. And again, one of the aspects of looking at, during the study period, we had environmental, we had some environmental consultants to monitor the water and do different things with us. So finding, because we want to make it a more lively, active location. So some of those recommendations are more embedded in the report and some of the studies also, so continue on with that. And then with the pavilion, that's, I think, where the interesting thing of going out, I think we need to do more there on what, how we can do different types of displays. One of the reasons we tried last year with Hometown Hockey was to do the dock out in the bay. It's that we've always wanted to try it, and so we did. And now I think there's an options of how do we do things like that? There's also, every event's a little different, so sometimes, again, with Hometown Hockey and others, we bring in the bigger stages. So some groups want to bring in stages, some want to use a smaller pavilion, which I think needs to be upgraded. Like what Kirsty was mentioning, one of the unique things about this park is you can be flexible. You can move things around and do aspects. So I think we need to look at all those options. The previous plan, which is still shows in here, we're showing a major amphitheater out on the point. But, and that's still, as in, could be an option, but it's a very big change to the park, a major change to the park. And so as we went through, we didn't see, people wanted to see us do different things, but I don't think they want us to majorly change the, change the park in a drastic way, but constant improvement, so. And again, with the special events, again, that's the interesting part of it, is that now that the way the park is built, we could do a variety of different types of events, if that helps.
Thank you. Counselor For. And also in section 6.13, Commercial Ventures and Food Services, that it's now talking about, it actually states, "Permanent and mobile services should be considered with an array of food options as determined by the market." I like that. That's better than, I think, the original plan was just to put in a concession without the food trucks. And I think that's why we ended up down to one. I'm wondering if you're considering in the short term moving the food truck location from where it's at right now, which is up in the Snenemah piece property there, which is seldom used, seldom sees foot traffic, and seldom sees food trucks, and moving it back down to where they would be normally during an event, which would be near that, the little blue canopy thingy that goes up and down. So I'm wondering if you're going to consider doing that in the short term, because the reality is, I don't believe it's working up there, and most of the people I know that I've talked to when I do go down there would prefer to see the food trucks down in the area where they're going to be walking, not up in an area where it takes them away from what they want to see.
Your worship, if I could? Yeah, so we tried with the, providing it on the, on what's going to be the Snenemah property. Later on in the summer, though, we did talk to the planning department, who runs the food truck program, and was trying to integrate them in, back into the park in different areas. And so we'll continue to do that in the next year. It's just, it's a balancing act with the different, all the different events. And again, getting back to the issues with pedestrians. But yes, it's going to go for 2018, we'll integrate them back into the downtown area, or into the down part of the park.
Excellent. And one follow-up to that. With regards to the zip line and the Rogers Hometown Hockey, there were a lot of concerns that it didn't get used throughout the rest of the year, but I believe you clarified that and mentioned that we were going to look for an operator next year. How is that going? Because that is a huge attractant and a huge fundraiser for not-for-profits that might be able to take advantage of it during the events.
Yeah, so we're going for a call, call for interest. Hopefully, it'll be finished and go with this month, if not early January. But again, I'd love to see the fact if it could be a local operator, which would be, we're hoping, we've sent out a few interests, if it is a local fundraiser group that has the skills to do that, would be the most ideal, because it could, it could work with the different local groups. Depending on that, though, it's going, I've already talked to a couple of the operating companies who tried to do it this year, but it was just a little bit too late, and they're still, they'll respond to the call for proposals.
Appreciate that. It is one of the focal points of the downtown in Nanaimo, in Tulare's degree. Thank you.
Thank you, Counselor For.
Thank you, Chair. Through you, Richard and Kirsty, thank you very much for coming and sharing your master plan, the master plan with us. This has been a long time coming. There's been a lot of work going into this, I know. And I'm just so pleased to finally see it moving ahead. I really like how you've identified issues and concerns and kept things flexible in terms of future development of the park. Certainly, as I recall, when the lagoon was first built, there was no swimming. And now it's, I've heard many people state that it's a preferred sandy beach. And I like the idea of improving access to the water and plans to facilitate that. So we could get into lots of details, but I think you've done a great job in gathering public input, and I'm pleased that we're going to do more of that, send it to committees. This is such a valuable asset to our city. It's probably, in my mind, Nanaimo's number-one attraction, and we want to get it right. So it has to be done carefully, and I'm convinced that we will do that, and we continue to make improvements to this beautiful park and this asset that we have. So thank you for your work, and I look forward, as I say, to seeing this move forward. Thank you.
Counselor Yocum.
Thank you. Great job, great location, great, great. I look forward to enhancements. Is there a way we can change the rocks so we don't get those annoying little ones stuck in your Birkenstocks and your bare feet in the summer? I'm kidding. But on a serious note, that was my bad attempt at humor, since we're supposed to be in Cal. On the map there, I don't know where the location was, but on a serious note, I want to make sure the park's protected. Numerous administrations ago, I don't know what era it was, but I remember it was on my other role, there were supposed to be some condos in this park, and some former administrations were willing to destroy. administrations were willing to destroy the park for some condos. So I don't know where they were supposed to be in there, but nevertheless, they're not there today. So is this park protected now so we don't have to have that fear? I should know that, but I'd like to have a, from the experts.
Yes, yes. And so the first slide, I won't go all the way back. Would this first slide be the best one, Kirsty? If I went way back to show that?
For the first aerial photo, that one's actually pretty good.
So if you see Counsel Yocum, if you see, sorry, your worship to Counsel Yocum, you see the shaded area up in the top, right by the highway? That's the two and a half, two and a half acres? 2.3 acres that Kirsty had mentioned earlier that was brought back into the park after the first plan was done. And one of the reasons we went out to do, do another one, so. And then us through council's parks designation bylaw, plus also through council's OCP amendment and zoning bylaw, the park is, is as you see it now. So, so all those are, are through those processes, those three designation processes, park dedication bylaw, zoning, and what was the third one I said?
OCP.
OCP designation.
Counsel Bester.
Thank you very much. I won't get into the 220-story plus towers that were to be right there with 145.
That would be good, if you could just carry on.
Thank you very much, your worship. Thank you very much, Ms. McDonald and Mr. Harding. The agenda indicates that the first purpose is to present the draft Maffeo Sutton Park Master Plan Update. And in the description that I learned was that we've had five public engagement sessions, an online session, some flag sessions along the promenade. When did those take place?
Over, well, Kirsty gave you the exact dates, but over the last two years. Two and a half years.
So two and a half years ago?
Over the last two and a half years, yeah.
Over two and a half years ago or over the last two and a half years? So when was the most recent one?
2015. The fall of 2015.
2015, thank you. So this master plan that we've had distributed is, has not changed since 2015.
I would say we've, we've taken information over the last year, so particularly on some of the, working with SFN on, on some of their desires for their property and incorporating some of the changes into some of that. Also with, again, some of the work that was going on, on the waterfront walkway information and that, and then also some of the use information, as you mentioned, about food trucks and issues like that. So we're gathering it, but we are late getting this to you.
Thank you. So the 05, 08, 012, and 015 master plans, and, and the reason for my, is what have we achieved or accomplished or crossed off the list from 5, 8, 12, and 15 moving forward? So if this is to present the new draft Maffeo Sutton Park Master Plan Update, this resembles to me, and I, like everybody else here, I think that Maffeo Sutton Park's the best thing that we have. And, and I love it. But that said, if we're going to go back out to Parks Recreation Wellness, if we're going to go over to the Community Vitality, and we're going to do more public engagement input, fundamentally, to me, it's 8, 12, 15, now 18. And I, from my point of view, I'm more interested in allocate or identifying, here's what you say that we need to do to maintain what we have, and here's the three or four or five major projects on that site. It's the first time that I've heard the public say, we want to connect to the Millstone and widen it and make it better and more usable and functional all the way to Bowen I don't disagree with that, but it's not really embedded in this report as a priority. And now that we're talking about doing waterfront walkway improvements from Departure Bay to the estuary, then, for me, then if this is the case, that we've already done some of this public outreach, and they've said, one of the most significant priorities for us is to extend the walkway up through, past Howard Johnson's and up the Millstone to Bowen Park, that's not in our waterfront walkway initiative. Maybe it should be, to form the connectivity and the transportation pedestrian cycling experience. So when, when I see this and I see public input, input surveys from 2012 and 2015, it really doesn't, to be quite honest, this isn't a master plan update. If you're saying, we're going to go out and do a 2018 Maffeo Sutton Park Master Plan Update, then I would better understand the purposefulness. So are you asking us for a six-month window and $150,000 to update this? Are we, are we doing? I can receive this, sure. But I'd like to know that sometime in 2018 or 19 or 20, when I hear that it's a 15-year plan, it's almost been a 15-year plan. So, and I'm not, I'm not trying to be cynical or sarcastic or any of those things. I'm just, in the next 10 years, I'd like to allocate the monies that you say that we need to do all the things that the community's told you that they'd like to see down there.
If I could answer the?
I think you know me well enough to know that I'm not being sarcastic.
I know.
I am trying to say 10 years, I sure hope that looks the way that you want it to look when you retire.
Yeah. So you worship, what we're hoping to do on this one is, it is a combination of all those different surveys and information. And we think this is the last, finally get in front of you, then let's just go and test it a little bit, a month or so. We're just thinking a month or two, we test it. We think we've captured a lot of the issues of what the public are wanting, have wanted, and have been consistent in other surveys and such. So we wanted us to test it. We just didn't want to bring it free for acceptance. You could accept it, which would be great too. You can just accept it tonight, if, and we wouldn't do that part. We just want to do one more quick test to make sure we're right, because it is such a sensitive park and so much passion about it, is, is if we want to test it with some of your, your committees. And also wanted to just give it out to the public one more time, say, here it finally is here. And we're, we're really hoping to come back to you end of January, February, saying, here's some of the last bit of input that we've got. Did we get it right? And, and I think exactly with that is coming now, here's some, here's a strategic plan or a capital plan of how to actually start implementing some of these.
Thank you, Richard. And with all due respect, I don't know that we can get it to the Community Vitality and the Parks Recreation and Wellness and put it in front of those two organizations and say, okay, now we want your feedback, to allow you to get back to us in the end of January or the end of February, to say, here's the feedback that we have, we've got it right, and now we're going to?
Mm-hmm.
Okay, well, we're gonna, we're going to, so hopefully, when we take it to the Vitality and the Parks and Rec, we're going to say, here's our top three, four, or five priorities. Do you agree? Kind of a yes or no? Put them in order of one to five. And number one's going to be 3 million, number two's going to be 6 million, number four's going to be 9 million, number five's free, and whatever. Otherwise, we'll, we'll do the 2012, 2015, 28 plan. And I'm, I'm just concerned about getting pieces of this done over the next 10 years, whatever this is. Thank you very much for hearing me out.
Counsel Kip.
Thank you. I feel the same as Counsel Bester. This is an old plan coming back in front of me. I've seen all of the machinations of this and it hasn't changed. And I thought, I was looking forward to some update, because in our 2012 to 2015 strategic plan, this was supposed to be a planned update. So it got done during that part of that time. But I made a motion then, when we toured the park one day, to get rid of the condos, get rid of those condos and giving up the road, what was called Arena Street, that used to go down to Anamou Bulldozing. And that wasn't parked, so the semantics about, oh, we're not giving up park, we're giving up a roadway for condos. It cost us, I think, $100,000 a month for 36 months. What happened to the WIST team?
The which? I'm sorry?
The WIST team.
WIST? I'm not familiar with that.
Waterfront interdepartmental staff team you guys had formed a couple of years ago. I know it transitioned into the South Downtown Wasteland Plan. I mean waterfront. So, you know, it transitioned to that, but there was a committee formed by staff, they were meeting. We've had machinations of Georgia Park being falling apart, the walkway's terrible, people are sliding down that walkway, we've talked about that for a long time. The Hilton proposal came through. In 2012, 2015, we talked about Departure Bay upgrades and we've done some of those, it's great. But this park plan, to me, has come back in the same machination. And I'm not certain, I know the public input, whether people still live here still. It is a gem, but we have a pile of gems. And almost all the cities on Bankard Round and all the cities on the mainland in Halifax have waterfront parks. It doesn't hold them apart from anybody. I'm not certain the concrete, for me, has been the best machination of that downtown gathering space, especially when we tore down Civic Arena, it gives us no covered space downtown to meet. And a historic cultural building taken down because of the condos. That mistake still burns deeply with me. And it's still being perpetrated almost here, because that playground is still beautiful and I see kids down there all the time playing. I don't like the idea of a building for a permanent vendor. What that means to me is I create a building out of tax revenue and it generates revenue for the park, I guess, but it's the one revenue thing, the one generator. I like food trucks, but that took us two and a half years, I think, to do the food truck thing. So for me, this, I mean, we're sending old information out to gather update. So this is, are you going to say in the lead of this, this is what we had planned three years ago? Now is it current? And I understand landscape architects and I understand the planning of a park and that. I'd be better up in the bush parks, quite honestly, now. So for me, we don't know about the WIST team, it's gone out the window, because that was in the, in the original strategic plans. This is an improvement plan update we're doing now, and it includes some of Georgia Park, so we're getting that. But for me, this has been 10 years, over 10 years. 2005 was the first machination, then 2008, when the economy collapsed. And I am disappointed, the rink isn't set up and those type of things, those are important to me too, besides re bringing up a plan. We've got how many master plans in the going out from Parks and Rec? Because Coleroy Dam's under a big plan right now, Beben is under a big reconsideration. Now this park is under reconsideration. We're looking at the waterfront walkway. So there's a lot of master planning going on. Am I, am I correct? Through you?
Just ask her, Harding.
Those three are complete, so now we're hopefully into implementation of those three. Beben and Coleroy are, been approved by council, so they're, hopefully now, continue on in the implementation. This is one, we're behind getting back to you to get it in place, so we can start making sure we can give you some strategic, or some capital planning for them. So this is one more to get off or get into the books, so that we can start providing some of those projects.
Thank you very much.
Counsel Brennan.
Thank you, your worship. Well, through you, your worship, to our staff, I really appreciate this plan. I like it a lot. I think that this is, in fact, our premier waterfront park. We're going to have the waterfront walkway lead into it and out of it. I clearly recall comments about a trailway network from Bowen Park to downtown, because I like to do that walk myself. And you have to come off the trails and you have to go on city roads and then back and find your way again. So, yes, I absolutely recall that. And I think it's, it's, it doesn't surprise me that people have said they want that. People in Anamou are really interested in walkways and connecting by walking and biking. So glad to see that that's going to be considered in, in the next few years. Another thing I really like is that the planning on this park is attracting partnerships. Great. It, it doesn't get any better than working with the, the clubs in town. And to have the Child Development Center brought in on some of that partnership and, and planning for that is an absolutely stellar idea. And I, I want to thank everybody involved in, in putting those kinds of partnerships together. I haven't seen this park look better. It's, it's, it's a great park, people love it. It's one of the, one of the things that draws people to Anamou in our festivals. It's absolutely overrun lots of times. And so, you know, many thanks to you. This is, this is a good plan. I mean, I would be happy to endorse it tonight, I, I think that might be premature. But you've worked long and hard on it and there's, there's no, there's no shame in taking our time, getting things right, connecting them up. So kudos to you, thank you.
First-time speakers, Counsel Armstrong.
Thank you, your worship. I just, I would like to echo the comments of Counsel Bester and Kip, that I think that it's time that we, we need to get some dollars and figures and start moving forward. I mean, we can keep studying plans and we'll be back here 10 years from now looking at the same plan. So myself, I would like to see it move forward with some numbers coming back to council and priorities. Thank you.
Thank you. And I couldn't agree with you more, Counselor. I have some questions before we go on to Counsel Kip, and that is, first one, I want to, I just wanted to say thank you to Mr. Harding, thank you to your staff and yourself for putting this report together. It's one of the most comprehensive reports that I've seen, that gives you not only the history, but the, right down to the nuts and bolts. It's a very, very good report. I had to use my magnifying feature on my phone, because there was font in there that was smaller than the finance department uses. So I've got questions. First off, Georgia Walkway. The stairs, come ramp, all that kind of stuff, I've never looked under it, so I don't know why it was built that way. Can you help me with that? I, I don't understand why it's built the way it is. With this deck going out there and then down to these stairs and ramp and all that kind of stuff.
So the main, main aspect there is the sewer interceptor's right underneath, the main sewer interceptor is right underneath it? So if you go down, you see the big concrete box, that's the main sewer interceptor?
Okay, thank you. And I, and I, and I, you and I have talked about this before, I brought it up at every waterfront walkway charrette that there was, and that is that we've got to do something about that pinch point there, so that people on bicycles can enjoy coming into the park or going out on the road, leaving their choice up to them. Second question is with respect to Lions Gate Bridge, Lions Great Bridge. Have we received an exemption from Transport Canada under the Navigable Waters Act to not allow that thing to swing? Notified them that it doesn't swing?
We, we have not, but our staff are working their own ways to make sure it continues to, to swing. So we're working on some options of.
Okay, but I, I saw $10,000 in, in the, in the report. That's for decking?
Yeah, that was for some, yeah, some painting and decking, yeah.
Okay, great, thank you. Swailana, when you talk about, I think Ms. McDonald could probably help with this one, talks about opening up Swailana and it talks about the wall being an obstruction to access to Swailana. Is the proposal to, 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 to bring it up, bring the sand right up, is it to reduce the size of the wall? What's the, what's the plan there? You're on.
We don't have a design done for that yet, but yes, there's opportunities to really pull that wall back to bring the great, the wall isn't actually needed anymore for, it is not needed. So we can pull it back and enlarge the beach. But it will require some changes to the walkway that goes around it as well.
Great, thank you. On page 46 of the report, there's a map. And number 11 is showing expanded shoreline feature, and yet the 11 is way over by the, is, is way over by the, by the roadway. I don't, I don't quite understand.
Sorry, I've got a different copy of it than you do. So is it on the schematic site plan?
It's a mess.
Page, you're page 30.
Schematic vision for Maffeo Sutton Park.
You're page 46.
It shows a, a dotted line. It shows a, a, a dotted line from beyond the parking area all the way over to intersecting the, the George Park.
The blue line actually is outlining what currently is a paving pattern down on site.
Right.
And that is the original shoreline, and that's existing. And then there is a, a little line connecting to the eleven that shows how it could connect over to what would be Georgia Park when that gets redone, that would continue on, that demarcation, probably not in a paving pattern, but in some other way to show what's fill and what was the original shoreline.
Okay, great. Thank you. As far as the concessions are concerned, I've spoken to vendors who've tried, who've been down there during festival days, and they do very, very well on, you know, those dozen days a year when there's the big festivals going on. They don't do so well during the, you know, during the off-PTDs. And I'm not sure where the twelve-hundred-and-fifty people that I'm reading in the, in the stats and the foot traffic, if you will, through there, twelve-hundred-and-fifty a day would be enough to sustain a business down there. So I, I think we're premature on that at this point, but I'd sure like to see them exposed because I'm telling you, if you come off of the, if you come off the parkway past the Lion's Great Bridge there and you head towards the parking lot there, you can't even see the vendors when they're tucked up in that area up there. They've got to be down where they would normally be. They have to be where the people are.
And your worship, of course, you can update a bit more on that, but I believe that since the last rendition of input we had was, was not a permanent vendor, wasn't the initial, and especially now since the food truck program has come into play, was to be more mobile, but maybe I'm wrong.
There was mixed feedback.
Mixed feedback, yeah.
And last but not least, on map F, where it shows the parking lots close to, I'm not even sure where map F is on my pages here, but it doesn't show the Basha Street Garage. I was curious as to why it didn't.
I think it's just out of range, so I could put an arrow and, and show that it's off the map.
But it shows this, it shows the parking down here.
Can do a new version of the map to show it.
What's that?
Can definitely do a new version, version of the map.
Well, no, because when Dragon Boat's here, that's the, that's the alternate parking of choice for Dragon Motors. That's where we send them, is to, is to the Basha Street Garage. And yet I didn't see it anywhere listed on there. I thought that was odd.
It's our first revision.
Thank you. That's it. Counselor Kip, to just, to know.
Just, I'm wondering, is this going to follow under the new construction process that we're inventing for the fire hall? Because this is a construction project. There could be things to move and do things and things to build. So you'll be following that same new process under the Deloitte review?
Yeah. Okay, thank you.
Thank you very much. We have no further questions.
And your worship, again, our, our suggestion of going out, we'd be, we'd be pleased to if council wants to support the, the plan as it is now. We would still go out and, and get people, but if the council wants to do them different.
Now, we do have two, uh, two delegations yet to come, so we wouldn't go too far. First one is Mr. Dave Hammond, Rotary Club of Nanaimo.
Which schedule is it on?
I'm not Dave Hammond. My name's Scott Bradford, and I'm the executive director for the Child Development Centre. So first, let me thank the city of Nanaimo for being so generous and inviting for the annual Silly Boat event. We've raised probably close to two million dollars for local kids with special needs. As you know, the, the Child Development Centre serves over a thousand young people a year in the Ladysmith, Nanaimo and North Island region with various services. Kids with special needs of all different kinds, from physical to mental, and have, have done that now for fifty years. And my four years being here in Nanaimo, I've come to realize that the CDC is very much an embraced and loved agency. And, you know, I'm most impressed with the city of Nanaimo and its support of local kids. The story I have a few minutes to share with you is one of momentum. It involves the Child Development Centre, but it also involves a number of other agencies and community leaders. So in two thousand and sixteen, the CDC had a student, an MBA student, come in and do a report on what is accessibility and how can we enhance recreational opportunities for kids and their families with special needs here in Nanaimo? And what he came up with was quite eye-opening. And it, it challenged us to think beyond wheelchairs and walkers, and it challenged us to think beyond just kids. So we started to think about access to great spaces, this being one of Nanaimo's best. And we started to look at not just kids with special needs, but also adults with special needs, aging population with special needs. And so we started to talk to other groups with this report in hand, and we saw some really incredible examples of other cities that have embraced this concept of kind of cradle-to-grave access and for all ages and all abilities. And we started talking to NACL, Nanaimo Area Community Living folks, and then we started talking about, talking to the Pacific Sport folks. And of course, we started talking with the folks at City Hall and City of Nanaimo. And momentum started to happen. And a few funders have also expressed some interest in getting involved in this program. And then Rotary, and Dave will speak to that in a, in a few minutes. But a committee formed about a year ago through CDC, NACL, Pacific Sport, and a couple of other folks have joined that committee as well. John Horn from the city, who was bringing in the seniors' voice. And so we started with what we called a signature park, and this being, we think, the perfect choice. That has expanded into a concept we call a socially inclusive park. And that's where people of all abilities would feel welcome in a place that's well-thought-out, not just for those physical challenges, but how do kids and how do adults learn? Tactile, audio, all the different dimensions of learning and social integration. And so this vision for this, this, this space for the community and places that kids driving through Nanaimo will ask their parents to stop. They want to go to that park. And adults and grandparents that come and that may have challenges with mobility or whatnot, they will want to bring their grandkids to that park because they will be able to interact with their kids. So this grand vision for this socially inclusive play space started to form, and it's not a, it's not a cheap venue or idea. It, it, it's going to require significant investment and in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. Our big hairy goal is a million. And with that, we would have one of the probably BC's most inclusive and socially inclusive park, something that we'd be very proud of. I think something that people wanting to, thinking about moving to the island would look at that park and say that, that was part of our consideration because we can play with our grandkids in that park. That park is inclusive to our needs, our special needs as well as adults. So we are now at a point where we've had a summer full of conversations with, with the city folks, and we're getting close to what we think is a solid vision that, we've shared that vision with some funders and have had some preliminary, very strong interests. We're probably somewhere beyond a hundred thousand dollars in interest, and we think that there's some matching. We think there's some corporate. We think there's grants and foundations that are out there. We haven't even started that yet. Part of that conversation expanded with Rotary and their hundredth anniversary, and I'll let Dave speak to that. But we're very excited about it. We are coming to today to, in partnership with Kristi and her team, to look at a vision that, for that area, for families, for the city and for people visiting, that we think will be a showcase in the province of BC. So we're looking forward to the next phase of this as we bring more and more people on to our working group. And one, one of those groups is Rotary. So I think I, it's my time to hand it over to Dave. He can speak to what Rotary's thinking around the park as well. So thank you for your time.
Thank you very much. I believe Counselor Kip has a question for you. No? Okay. Nope, good, thank you. Counsel Brennan.
Scott, I think, um, Counsel Brennan, a question?
Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. Through you, I just, I just want to let you know that, um, oh, back in the early nineties, I was on the school board, and it was not uncommon for people to come to the board and say, I moved to Nanaimo, I chose Nanaimo because of the Child Development Centre there because I needed that for my children or my child. So it doesn't surprise me at all that you would suggest that the playground would become a destination point for, for people who have challenges. So I really look forward to, to the development of that. Thank you.
Thank you.
Go ahead, sir. Mr. Hammond.
Mayor McKay, Counselors, ladies and gentlemen, I am Dave Hammond. I'm here today to represent the Nanaimo Rotary Club and as part of the working group that you've just heard Scott and, and staff talk about. And, and just to clarify, Scott didn't particularly say this, but we're talking about the main thrust of what we're working on together is the renovation of the playground. Just thought I'd point that out because he didn't actually say that, so. So I'm here to talk about the Rotary Club first and then how it all fits in. So the Rotary Club of Nanaimo was chartered by Rotary International May first, nineteen twenty, and has been serving the Nanaimo community ever since. We are the original club, and from that club, four more clubs have been formed and all continue to serve the community of Nanaimo and Lansville. I don't really have time to list all the things that Rotary's done for the community, but I'm sure that most of you know many of them, probably not from the early years, but a bit more recently, but it's, but it's an awful lot in terms of capital projects and operating projects, both. As I said before, in two thousand and twenty, we'll be celebrating our hundredth anniversary. And to recognize that achievement, our club wanted to create a, a, a place in the community that would first of all, recognize a hundred years of Rotary service to the community, but also to help create a community space. To that end, about eighteen months ago, we approached staff at Parks and Recreation and, and talked about how this might all come together, and it, and it's been slow to come together, the same as this process has been slow to come together. But it's picked up steam in, in the past several months, especially when the Child Development Centre and their partners came on to the scene. As Scott has said, we've spent the last several months working together and thought that the best thing to do, and again, supported by staff, is to work together on, on how we could recreate, if that's the correct word, the existing playground, and also a place adjacent to that to recognize the works of Rotary at the same time. The intention would be that it would be adjacent to the playground. Our, our theme would most likely be, be peace. We would be looking for a place of relaxation and contemplation where people could watch what was going on in the, in the playground and also have the vision of the, of the harbor and the river. Would also be our intention to recognize the First Nations history in, in the park and include that as part of the project. We do not have specific plans at, at this point in time. We're here to talk to you about what we've accomplished so far. And what we're really looking to do is, is ask for your blessing for us to continue as a group to work towards the project. In particular, this project, you've heard that the playground is more or less at the end of its life. We would like to have our Rotary project completed by the time the spring of two thousand and twenty comes along. And so there is some urgency to get going on the planning of the, of the area. Once those plans get further along, we would, of course, bring them back to you for your input. We would be working with staff and their committees to work with us on the, on the process of, of the plan. So that's about all I, I have at the moment. I, I'd be happy to answer any questions if you have any.
Thank you very much. I don't see any speakers. Wanted to know if you brought your check.
Oh, I forgot about the check part. I should have paid attention to my notes. Sorry about that. Uh, you could all carry it away. I was trying to follow Scott's lead and not look at my notes. At this point in time, the Rotary Club of Nanaimo is prepared to commit two hundred thousand dollars to the project. We would be looking towards other fundraising efforts through senior levels of Rotary, but we're comfortable that we'll have at least two hundred thousand dollars available for the project.
Thank you very much. Again, I don't see any questions for you. Thank you very much.
Okay, thanks.
All right. Counsel Brennan.
Well, um, there is a recommendation here for us, so I would like to, to make the recommendation that council receive the draft Mifflin Sutton Park Master Plan and refer it to the Parks Rec and, is that, am I wrong?
No.
Refer it to the Parks Recreation and Wellness Committee and the Community Vitality Committee for input and post the draft, Mifflin Sutton Park Master Plan update on the city's website for further public feedback.
Thank you. It's moved by Counsel Brennan. Is Sarah seconded? Seconded by Counsel Thorpe. Thank you. Discussion, or you're supposed to speak to it? Counsel Brennan?
No, I think there's been a lot of talking about this, so.
Thank you. Thank you. Counsel Bestwick.
Thank you. My question with respect, support these two motions. The timeframe, the timeline, to be able, is pretty critical because clearly much of the work, whenever the work is done, is in the better weather months. So whatever the work might be, sorry, I don't know whatever the work might be, but whatever it is. So if we're going to take this to Parks and Rec and Community Vitality and the public, and then is there going to be more open houses, sir? So we're just, so as a eleven or thirteen-member Parks and Rec Committee, are we just going to introduce this to them and say, what do you think? And say, can you get back to us? Because we only meet monthly, so if they get it in January or maybe December, I'm not sure, but what's our, what's our timeline to be able to come back?
Mr. Harding.
Yeah. Sorry, you're done, Counselor?
No, I think, I think he asked his question.
According to the mayor, I'm done, yes.
Okay. Counsel, we, because we, we've, we've indicated a lot of input, and particularly also, we're just coming off another summer of input on, on all the, the walkway input that, that council did in other engagement. We think this is really just a, a quick test of, of the plan. So we do believe, believe we can come back to you by early February or late January with, with our input. And I think believe, I mean, I mean, I think Mr. Corson's coming back from his input already on the walkway because I think he went and talked to different committees in the last month or so. He's coming back. So we hope that we're on the same, similar type of, of quick review on that. That's on the plan. The playground's a different issue, but we can talk about that. The playground's a different issue, but we can talk about that separately.
Thank you.
Counsel Armstrong?
No, my question was...
Thank you. It's been moved and seconded. Call the question, all is in favor. Opposed, motion carries. So, with respect to the delegations, is there someone, is there any business arising from the delegations? Counsel Hong?
Thank you. With regards to delegations from the Rotary and Child Development Centre, I direct, make a motion to direct staff to work with the two organizations or other organizations to come up with a plan for the playground, Mofeo Sutton Park, all-inclusive playground.
Okay, moved and seconded. Ms. Gurry, is that capture what we're looking for?
I believe so, your worship. Through you to counsel, Counsel Hong, it's to direct staff to work with both organizations to come up, develop a plan for the playground that is all-inclusive.
Thank you very much. So, it's been moved by Counsel Hong, seconded by Counsel Armstrong. Discussion, Counsel Bestwick?
Thank you. Clearly, this is not something that we would wish not to entertain. Just, and clearly, the Child Development Centre and the Rotary Club are extraordinary Oftentimes, we found ourselves here making motions on the fly, and we've heard that say just most recently. And not that there's anything wrong with working with a partner that's willing to invest $200,000. I'll ask the same question again, not again, I'm sorry, but as it relates specifically to this all-accessible part by 2020, I just want to ensure that you, Mr. Harding, believe that we have the ability to complete the project. I know we're going to work on it together. Great, awesome. Do you believe that we have the capacity and the ability resourcefully to do whatever? Because we don't know what the number is.
Right.
Like, we have no idea what the number is. Maybe we do.
So...
So, just before, just before we say, "Ready, set, go," is there a process that should be, that we should have a discussion about before we say, "Ready, set, go?" Because the master plan is just being, we're just updating it now in the next three months.
So, worship, if I could, if I could answer Counsel Bestwick's question. So, for a number of years, we've identified that the playground needs to be redone. In fact, under the Canada 150, we tried a couple of times to use that as a legacy project. So, council had allocated some funds for the playground already. We currently have it. We were hoping to add up to it, double it with the Canada 150. And that's again, how both organizations found out that we're working away on it. Because council provided a motion for us to do those grants. So, currently, for the budget right now, for the park, the playground, we have three, for 218, we'll have $363,600 allocated to it. And the process that I think will be very similar is the one we just did through the Stevie Smith Park. Council had already identified it as a project. We were starting with it with one group. Stevie Smith Legacy got on board and we could trip, you know, it was a $200,000 project with a community contribution. The Stevie Smith Park is well over a million dollars. What I would see with this park, because we have some short-term things we need to do, and working with the groups, I'd see it be a phased project. So, I would see some of that work starting in 218, probably September 218. Went up to work with the groups on it. And if there's more improvements, if we have all the funds in place, we would phase it and add more as it goes. But I think there needs to be some work done, and we'd see that starting in 218.
Okay, thank you very much for your help and helping me understand. Thank you.
Counsel Thorpe?
Thank you, Chair. I think Mr. Harding, through his answer to Counsel Bestwick, has clarified things for me, and I certainly want to support this. To me, I compare it to the waterfront walkway project, which is a huge, long-term project, but we have identified support for it, and we've identified some quick wins to try and achieve fairly, in a timely manner. And I think if we can, we've certainly heard from this table tonight that people are interested in moving this plan forward. And so, if we can get it approved quickly, and then Mr. Harding can come back to us with some quick wins, and this could be at the top of the list as a priority to get done. And many of the other aspects of the master plan will take longer and be in the more distant future, but I see this as maybe a first step. So, I look forward to our staff working with the Child Development Centre and Rotary, and hopefully, this will be a quick win for everybody. Thank you.
Counsel Fuller. Ms. Gurry?
Thank you, worship. I just wanted to add to what Mr. Harding had said, and just that my understanding of the motion is that they're working with the Child Development Centre and the Rotary Club to develop a plan. So, I'm assuming that that plan would be reported back to council before moving ahead. So, just wanted to add that one. Thank you.
Thank you. Counsel Fuller?
Yeah, through you to staff or someone. My understanding was it was a broader group than just Rotary and Child Development Centre, and there was a name for that group?
Yeah, there's two actually.
Sir, we're recording this, you'll have to come to the podium.
Thanks. And my question is, wouldn't it be more appropriate to use the names of the groups as opposed to just the two?
Sure. So, we're dealing with also on the committees, Pacific Support and NACL, the Community Living.
Yeah.
Those are the two main groups.
But was there not a name for the whole group of groups?
Yeah, we call ourselves the Socially Inclusive Park Project Group. SIP.
There you go. So, wouldn't it be more appropriate to use that? It's up to Mr. ...
Are you proposing a friendly amendment?
Friendly amendment.
Okay. And it's okay with the seconded? Okay, very good. Thank you.
We just formed another group.
They already...
I think they've already been formed.
Well, I know, and that's why we're making a motion that they've already formed. Process for me, that's all.
Mr. Chairman, I just want to clarify that Rotary is technically not part of Scott's group. We just joined together with their umbrella group to plan it together. For Rotary, we just need to be included in the motion, that's all I'm saying.
Okay, we got some advice from the clerk. Ms. Gurry?
Thank you, worship. Under the delegations, it says the Child Development Centre, the Rotary Club, and partners. Could we maybe just use "and" partners that would kind of maybe grasp all of the different things?
Thank you.
Yeah, so I think that was Counsel Hong's original motion anyways, so it would be not needed to be amended.
I didn't note the seconded on the original motion. Was Counsel Armstrong? Okay, so that language is acceptable? Okay, great, thank you. All right, we're good to go. Thank you, gentlemen. Call the question, all is in favor? Opposed, motion carries. The next item is under delegations, not related to a report of council. The first one is Mr. Trevor Heska. Is Mr. Heska in the gallery? Okay, thank you. The next one is from Mister, delegation from Mr. Holden Southward. Good afternoon, sir. And you have, we need your name, of course, we've got your address.
My name is Holden Southward. My address is 848 Aina's Place, Nanaimo.
Thank you very much. And you have up to 10 minutes.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Yes, this historic villages agricultural theme park that I came up with was out of, kind of out of haze, because I knew that waterfront property that the city owns and partially, and has a C-span lease on it, might be developed or a road going through it pretty soon. And the, the reason, and I thought it would be a good idea to have a theme park in Nanaimo because we don't have one, but something that would be, would be a testimony for self-reliance. It would be a fun thing that people would want to travel all around to see. You know, people just don't come to Nanaimo to walk around and look at condos. There's something different in every town that has success in bringing people from far away, just like even something like Coombs, goats on the roof, or in a Shemaneus, they have the murals. And in, like in Victoria, it's a great attraction. People come there because, well, the Empress Hotel and the legislative buildings are a focal point, but really, it's places like Bouchard Gardens and Old Chinatown that are really attractive. So, the reasons is, I think this would be a good idea, is that it's just the beginning of a conversation. I believe this should be publicly, or not publicly funded, but privately funded, and through volunteer work. This is just the beginning of the conversation, don't worry, because I just wanted to give the idea out there. And is this in hot point? Is it on the screen at all? Or do I have to press this? Okay, forgive the chicken scratch there, my, there you go. This is the, my computer broke down, but this is from an aerial photograph I got from the city. This is the proposed land. Part of that's on C-span lease, but I heard that the city is wanting to request that land back. It's right next to the Gabriel Ferry and in front of Port Place Mall. It's about four acres. And just for perspective, and on to the next one, this is the one, this is another perspective one, where you can see off to the right, there's the historical building, which will be two stories tall, hotel on top, but below, there's, I was thinking it'd be nice to have a Chinatown and maybe an old Victorian town in that. And there'd be little, many town squares in each connected by an alley. And then there'd be three windmills and that provide power, and they'd look, it'd be a beautiful scene on the harbor, on the harbor front. And in part of the agricultural tour, you'd also go into, you'd have the greenhouses there. And I'll show you some better pictures than this chicken scratch. I'm trying to get this, I guess it's the other way. Okay, this is just a, it's kind of inverted there, but this is just a closer view of the layout of the historical main building, where you'd have the little town squares. And you'd see it's where it's in perspective, where it's next to the windmills and the outdoor And here is a perspective from the ocean. Wouldn't that be beautiful? You'd see a beautiful ornate 1880s building with beautiful, slow-moving windmills right on the waterfront, and then you'd see giant greenhouses that would be sloped 26 feet high on one side, coming down to four feet at the bottom, be 80 feet long, 40 feet wide. And they'd, they'd be designed to, it'd be a solid roof with membrane and a skim coat of concrete, so that you could put soil and you can grow beautiful wildflowers on it. And that'd be a beautiful sight for the cruise ships and the ferries and even part of, part of the town. And at nighttime, the outside would be lit by old-fashioned oil lamps. And I can't really read it there, so I'm just going to find, and here's the view of the agricultural theme park itself, some of the details in there. First, you'd go in through the underground tour, historical villages tour, and then you'd go through a beautifully made ornate gardens, you know, it'd be mostly edible foods. It'd be like the Bouchard, the garden, you know, edible garden of Bouchard Gardens, kind of like that. And it'd be a little sanctuary for people to get away from the city. Just in the sanctuary, the garden tour sanctuary would be enclosed by a 10-foot wall with a little tile roof just carpeted on top. So, when people go there, especially when it's grown up, the trees, the fig trees around the pond, they'd be in a beautiful little world away from the city, all the noise, all the concrete. And they, and everything, all the wood, it would be made for beauty. There'd even be three little mini, you know, you know, dwarf little cottages there for the caretakers. There'd be a chicken coop there. So, it'd all, it'd be made for fun and made for even recreation, a rest area for people to come in. So, that'd be inspira, it's an inspiration for people to see, you know, if they come and they'd see Nanaimo has a personality, they have character, they have foresight and self-determination in a world where we're supposed to follow the code, you know. So, it's, this would be a great relief, I believe a great attraction for people. And here's just a little view of the greenhouse. As I said, it's 26 feet high, four feet at the back, and it would be all beautiful posts and beam out of fur stain, and it'd be glass panels four by eight stacked on top of each, or glass, yeah, panels stacked on top of each other in between the posts. And each one, each panel would have 32 12 inches by 12 inches panes, and half of them would be colored lightly tinted with yellow and green. So, it'd not just be beautiful from the top with the flowers, it'd be just absolutely magnificent, just all that glass. And this would also be the entrance, there'd be us, to the underground tours, and that would be wheelchair-accessible because the grade would be so gradual. So, they'd enter in from the front, and they go down the center, the center path about four feet wide, and then they enter into the underground tours section, and I'll explain that soon. And then they come out again through greenhouse two, and then they do the tour of the agricultural theme park. And there we go. This is just the perspective view from a higher point in relation to the rest of the park. There's the historical villages off to the left and the agricultural park down below. This is the underground historic villages tour. And here it is up close. And so, you'd enter in, before you do the agricultural tour, theme park tour, you'd go down the sloped, in the center of the, of the greenhouse one, gently sloping down, and then you'd enter into a tunnel that would look like just an old-fashioned coal mine. It'd be eight by eight, made out of concrete, but dressed up to look like an old-fashioned coal mine. And then you go through there, and you go underneath the greenhouses, and that's where the exhibits would be, because you don't want to dig down too far, but the exhibits, like the, or the green, sorry, the windmills, you go underneath the windmills, and then also the outdoor auditorium. And these would be, would have a floor that'd be raised about five feet high, so that when you go in the exhibit, you have at least room for a 12-foot ceiling. And this would be, the exhibits would be miniaturized versions of little towns that were kind of self-reliant, like the first one would be the Amish. And, but it'd be miniaturized figures, and then it'd have a painted background, so you'd see the back, the mountains, and then you'd see the sky as it comes up and as it's domed. And then you go around to greenhouse two, to, and then greenhouse three, like maybe it could be a Swiss mountain village, and who knows? And then one of the most important ones, I thought, was, the biggest one would be the Nanaimo villages tour underneath the auditorium.
One minute, one minute, sorry.
Yeah, underneath the auditorium. And so, you can see what Nanaimo was like, the people were, how they lived 200 years ago. It'd be, it'd be like you'd be walking on a sea of glass, and you start from the Nanaimo Estuary and see this miniaturized world, all the trees, all the villages, all the totem poles, going right to departure bay. And I just trying to see if there's any interest. This would actually act as a geothermal heating system, this underground tour system, along with other connections, to heat the greenhouses in the wintertime. So, it'd be a testimony of self-reliance, that'd be attractive. So, it's not dressing up Nanaimo for sale on the world market, but it's definitely be drawing in tourists, it'd be something original. And so, what I was doing is I just wanted to see if there's any interest in the city in this before I had actually court anybody for private funding or volunteering or starting to organize something like this. Because I think, I, go ahead. Questions?
Thank you. Counsel Hong?
Thank you, thank you, Mr. Southward. If you want to go back to your first picture of the map, I wanted to clarify some information for you, because it's not that correct.
Yeah, you know, I made it look like a fat slug.
The next one. Sorry, with the, there you go. So, according to your map, where Chinatown and Old Victoria Town is, we don't own that property, so...
Well, I was told, I said, I was heard that was told, that was a C-span lease that the city was requesting to get back.
No, the C-span lease we're talking about is where that C-span ferry dock is, where those rails are. So, we're hoping to get that part back. And where you have C-span lease, we actually own that part up to where the trestle is. And staff, if you listened to the earlier presentation of Number One Port Drive, a road is going to go right through your curve, where you're parking.
Well, that's a proposed road, yeah, I know, it's a...
Yeah, so that's our main access. So, those are some of the things. And then if Counselor Kip is, probably knows better, but isn't this... And then if Counselor Kip is, probably knows better, but isn't this Phil? So I don't think you're going to get geothermal from Phil, and I don't think he can dig a tunnel.
Well, the heat, the heat from the earth always rises anyway. It just simply, you're circulating it over a larger area and condensing it into a smaller area and continuing to circulate it.
Yep.
So it rises up all over the place, doesn't matter whether it's Phil. I got this from the map here, so I was given the map, but I talked to one of the guys in the city, so that's what they said, they're, they're, that's, that's actually city, city land. And I'm not sure, I think this is maybe because that's what I heard, C-span was just not using it enough and the city was wanting to request it back. So that's where I got the information. I thought I'd rush into it because I know as soon as you've got oceanfront property or something there, they're going to do something with it. A road there, I'd say, would actually create possible congestion, because you already have the bus stop, the ferry and park, and also the, you know, the mall parking. Whereas just a parking lot where you, next to the historic hotels, they just go in and they go out on the same lane rather than crossing the lane. You'd have to have another set of lights there potentially.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. Counselor Beswick.
Thank you. This is what committee of the whole meetings are all about, is people coming forward with their ideas and their creativity and their offerings. And we had a gentleman come to us, I'm going to say eight months or so ago, with a similar sanctuary concept for the property on the highway that is Green Thumb, known as Green Thumb Nursery, for an acquisition and, and something as beautifully thought out as, as what you've attempted to do here. So I compliment you for your, for your energy and your efforts and, and what you've, the time that you've put into this exercise so far. Is there interest? I, I, I don't know what level of interest, but I certainly appreciate the fact that you've given us some ideas. So thanks for bringing forward.
There's definitely interest in the public, it just, it just, if it's not in with the city, the tone of the people working for the city, or, or whatever agendas you have, it's pretty hard to move forward. So it'd have to be, and this has, and this would have to move very fast, otherwise it's going to be, it's going to be developed. So that's a.
If I could just follow that up with your permission, Mr. Worship.
Go ahead.
You just heard about a project that came to us 18 months ago. Parks and Rec for a playground improvement enhancement partnership, working with, and something that we've already identified that we would like to do too. So just kind of putting a project like this, that is this complex, in a hurry-up.
Yeah, it'd be private, I wouldn't do it, I don't believe in asking money from the government, no way.
So I'm just suggesting that we just witnessed one where there's, there's money on the table and it's a project that's already identified that, one that, and it took 18 months to get here and it's going to take another, the 2020 summer probably to get completed. So don't, I'm not trying to dash your hopes, but just know that the process will probably be a little slower than you would like it to be.
Well, I, I know that, a lot slower, especially since I haven't really caught, it's just my idea alone. It's just kind of like, you know, giving out a good, another idea, another little, you know, possibility in the future. And if it creates a buzz, then it does, if it doesn't, then there's nothing I can do about it.
Thank you. Counselor Fuller.
Yeah, I was just curious if you've brought these to, to any of your ideas to play within, with the new Port Drive waterfront master plan that we're actually looking at through the city?
Yeah, yeah, I did, I did. That's why I thought I'd move forward with that before these were concrete, the plans or, you know, I mean, so that's, this is the last chance, but this would just be, you know, just put Nanaimo on the world stage, just those beautiful windmills, the, the greenhouses with, that are covered in, the sloping roof covered in beautiful flowers and the whole, the whole park concept. The historical miniaturized villages really would be, it's, the whole theme is self-reliance. Then you go through the parks, so it, it all fits together. And the historical villages would be all legitimate shops making money, restaurants, the hotel would make money, and that could be revenue for the city.
Good. I'm glad you brought it forward to the waterfront master plan and you've put your ideas in like many other people in the community. It's an interesting concept. I don't see the deep sea discovery center up there, but, you know, we don't need that.
I'm just, I'm just one guy, but yeah, other people have to be on board.
It's definitely got some work put into it, I appreciate that.
One little suggestion, maybe your microphones need to be just a little louder when I'm right here, I think it's louder out there, kind of quiet here, just a little suggestion.
Thank you very much, sir. No further questions or comments. Thank you. So our next delegation is from Shawna McAllister.
I want to thank you from a member of the city. I'm Shawna McAllister and you guys do a fabulous job and I just appreciate you all.
Ms. McAllister, I wonder if we can get your address and if you can pull that microphone a little bit closer to you, because I think.
Sure. It's 1-82 Doric Avenue.
Thank you.
Thank you. So I'm here today because, well, I'm an activist and musician, and I was selling cars this year and making a ton of money. And I got fired, but then they realized, oh, we shouldn't have fired her. So I'm still friends with them, but there's some problems with the industry that I'm trying to address. But I want you guys to know that like I actually love the people in the car industry. And I've put on several festivals at Mefal Satin where Nissan sponsored each year. And twice a week I go visit people at a car industry and sit and have coffee with them. But there is something very bad that's happening in the city and it's common practice and it's shocking. When I'd sell a car, and let me tell you, they make lots of money, I'd sometimes make 17 or 1800 dollars for two hours of hanging out with someone making a commission. So there's a whole lot of money. And I think that something needs to be done very quickly, because as I'd be washing the car, because someone's going to buy it right away, and the one car lot girl would be washing all the cars, the job for the car lot girls at these big places and car lot boys is to wash every single car, and then tomorrow wash every single car again. And they're using a chemical called TCE, it's torachloroethylene, and it is so bad you can't even imagine. Ford just lost a class action suit in the States because it was being leaked into the groundwater. And it's, if you just type in TCE, you will see that it's one of the major pollutant chemicals. It crosses placentas, you can't do anything about it. It's major lymphocyt, lymphocyte issue and cancer causing. And this chemical is found in basically anything to deal with washing of vehicles and cars. And so while I was scrubbing the tires and rims and the cars and people coming out and pouring more blue chemicals and adding whatever amount of water, and this is happening all day long at every single dealership in this Bermuda Triangle that Dawn, Wayne Ralston calls it the Bermuda Triangle, it was being leaked into Long Lake. So about two weeks after I got fired, and I still love them and they love me, I woke up and thought, oh my gosh, there's TCE and it's being leaked. And so I thought, well, this is actually true, this is bad, and that was just a part of the whole bad system. And so I felt guilty because I didn't want to harm the people that I still love from my workplace, but I had to do the right thing. And so I called Fish and Wildlife, and Fish and Wildlife said, oh yeah, definitely, we'll call them right away. So they called them and said, you guys can't be using that chemical anymore. And my workplace said, oh, okay. But they're not going to stop, like this is what they use. This is a routine thing that they use on all the car dealerships, it's a routine cleaner for tires and rims. And so then I thought, that's not done, they're not just going to quit, and every single other place is going to just continue. And like Long Lake, there's people swimming and there's ducks, and this is just one dealership that's being washed into the groundwater system, there's no wastewater receptacle happening here, there's not, it's just being washed into. And all these people are swimming and playing in this TCE. So then I phoned someone from the city, I think Kevin McDonald. And Kevin McDonald went there and he's like, oh my goodness, we have to do an emergency spill report here. So they did an emergency spill report, and then he called me back and said, well, it's, it's all fixed up. So I'm like, well, how is it all fixed up? Oh, well, we did the emergency spill report. Well, are you going to stop them from doing that again? Oh, well, it should be finished and fine. Well, it's not actually, because they're not going to stop, because I'm friends with the people that still work there. I still talk to my old boss who fired me, texting and sending videos and pictures, and nothing has stopped. So then I went to go see, I went to go see every single city person at City Works. And then I even went to go see all the city people across the street from the city hall, all the way up the building. And then at City Works, Wayne Ralston came out and had like a very long meeting and had numerous phone conversations with Wayne Ralston. And he's been working for the city for 15 years. And he said, oh my gosh, this upsets me so much. He's like, this is what makes me basically want to put my head in my hands and cry. This has been happening for so long, we call this area the Bermuda Triangle and nothing is being done. None of these places have what they're supposed to have, which they have in Victoria, which is a wash interceptor and an oil and gas separator. And they're supposed to have logbooks that no matter what you can look through, oh yep, yep, we had it cleaned last year. None of these places have any of this, and I'm telling you, because I know, they make a ton of money and they can afford to. So I'm almost on my point. So the problem and why I'm here is, I went, it was almost like a video game. I went to ding, 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 and everyone was like, oh, this is terrible, go see him. Oh, this is terrible, go see him. So I went to go see everybody, we're talking federal and provincial environment, fish and wildlife, and then more top fish and wildlife, every single person in City Works and wastewater management and everyone, and they all say the same thing, go see him. So no one knows what to do, except for Leonard Krog. Leonard Krog said, holy moly, go see the city. So here I am today to say, would you please consider adopting the same thing that Victoria's had for years, which is two bylaws, which is the code of practice for automotive deal operators, and then also code of practice for vehicle wash operations. So it's bylaw 2922, and there's two subsections for it, I believe. And so all Victoria has done is said, if you're going to have a vehicle, and if you're going to have, pardon me, a vehicle sales place, a large fleet operation or any sort of wash facility, you have to have an interceptor. They make money, they can do this, and you have to keep log records and you have to clean this thing out every year. Because I don't want my kids swimming in Long Lake, I'm almost done, thank you. I don't want them swimming in Long Lake, because I'm telling you, this chemical is so bad, that if you just go on the internet for five minutes, you'll just be scared, because this is happening. And my, my second point is, we got to get to the whole idea of the pollution. So I talked to Wayne Ralston, and Wayne Ralston was like, he was so upset, you guys can't even imagine. He basically was like, he would, you can't even imagine how upset with this guy was. And he was telling me, I used to live in Prado Street and I know the construction that was happening on a big place, on one of these drug houses that was now rebuilt. What the guy did who was doing the construction there, he poured paint, la, 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 down the sewer, because it's cheaper to do that and get caught. And guess what? He did this during the Bath to Boat Festival. Did anyone else see the sprinkle beautiful sparkle water that happened during the Bath to Boat Festival? It was completely sprinkled rainbow colored, because the paint that this guy put down the water course down, all the way down there. And so Wayne Ralston found that, found it, traced it back to the guy. And there's no fine structure that the city can actually do, like there needs to be a fine structure where it's like, first offense, $1,200, second offense, $3,000, third offense, $4,500, because these people can just do anything they want, because there's nothing, nothing at all to get them in trouble, sorry. So I'm almost done, thank you for listening. And so what I'm saying is, could you please just implement the code of practice that Victoria's doing for the wastewater? And also, it really isn't that hard to look up what the businesses are through the business licenses and say, well, none of them have it. Let's just send them a letter, they have to have this, you know, adopted by 2020. They have the money for it. And then maybe hire someone, or I would volunteer, to go up and every year, oh, can we see your log records? Beautiful. Oh, yes, I see that you've actually got it cleaned out, that's wonderful, wonderful. Okay, you have the TCE chemical in here? Oh, I see you have the WCB thing on the back of your wall. And so we need some safety stuff happening in the city, because there's a big elephant in the city, and he's pooping toxic waste. And I'm done, thank you.
Thank you. Before I go to Counselor Fuller, Ms. Samra, did you want to?
Thank you, Worship. Thank you for the presentation. Without knowing a lot of the details and what role city staff played or didn't, I will take the presentation and take a look and have a conversation with city staff. I also just wonder aloud on federal, provincial, and local government jurisdiction, because we're dealing with across jurisdictional boundaries with the flow of water into ocean, and a number of other things, so there may be other remedies in place. So I just wanted to put those out there.
Thank you. Counselor Fuller.
Through you to the delegation. You mentioned talking to Leonard Krog and he said, or Kroeg, I should say, he said to talk to the city. Did he say anything that the province is doing on this?
No, because I talked to the province, I spoke to the federal environment and provincial environment.
But as your MLA, did he say anything that the province is doing, or just say, talk to the city?
If there's nothing here, then I can go back and book another point with him and say, let's do something.
Okay, thank you. And through you to staff, this goes to if this is happening, and I don't doubt Ms. McAllister, I have a great appreciation for her also. She tried to play off that she was a relative of mine when I was in the hospital, so she could come in and play me music. And I love that, and I will love that forever. This goes to an email that I put out, and if this is happening, do we have fines for such? And if so, are they high enough to further, to further the chance of them complying to this? Because I know a lot of our fines, and this goes to what Ms. McAllister said, are, oh, well, it's only $100, why worry about it? And I do believe we are going to be revisiting our fine structure, so, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. I've got a couple of questions for you. One is, while you were doing your research, well, first off, I just wanted to say, I was there at that particular moment when you had your guitar. I think there might have been some baked goods as well at the time, but Counselor Fuller's brother and I were in the waiting room at the time that that happened. It was the first time I met you. The paint, did you report that? Did you witness that and report it?
No, Wayne spoke about that, and he said that that was one of the defining moments, that he shook his head, that he couldn't find these people with deterrent enough fines.
Right. So, so on this bylaw 2922 in Victoria, did you follow that up, other than its existence? Do you know what remedies there were that they, that they found with respect to that? I'm not so certain if you would have put oily, put TCE through an oily water separator, whether it would, it would do anything?
Well, that's where they have the wash interceptor, I'm sorry, please forgive me for interrupting you.
Sorry?
There's something that they want all the dealerships and wash places to have, it's called a wash interceptor, and basically it's a big basin. And that basin collects and then they pump out the materials like once a year when it rises up to the like 10,000 liters or whatever the liter capacity is. So supposedly the TCE would be contained rather than just down the sewer system into Long Lake or wherever it ends up.
So I, I can, I can say that, that fisheries and oceans would, and I'm sure Environment BC would have, take a very dim view of any dilatory substance going into a, into a stream, period.
They, I spoke to, I went up and down both buildings on Labio and then including the City Works building, but up and down the buildings on Labio, and I spoke to many people, and they said, nope, that is a city problem because it's through the city system, even though it's landing up, landing in the lake.
Yeah, thank you, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Counselor Kip?
On the Environment Benny Building on Labio, Mr. Fred Taylor came when they were designing the building and pointed out that they hadn't put an oil separator in their parking lot. The Ministry of Environment, and they didn't have to in their plans in those days, but now, thanks to Mr. Taylor, they put one in their building in Labio. They weren't even going to do it, and that goes back 15, 20 years ago. If you think they're going to get out of their office and do something, talk to Mr. Kroeg.
Thank you very much. We have, oh, Counselor Hong.
Thank you. I just wanted to let Shawna know that Nanaimo is trying to use their best practices when it comes to new builds, I'm not sure about the old ones, but with the implementation of staff recommendations for bioswells. So what those are, are really important. I think we have a bioswell issue that we need to look at. But what those do is actually filters the water that's coming down from runoffs before they reach, you know, our watershed to recharge it. So, you know, with some of our stuff, we, we are having, I don't know about the old ones, but I know that for a fact that we are making developers for bioswells for everything, and green gardens and rain gardens and everything else. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Counselor Yocum?
Yeah, thank you very much for the information. I think I remember recall now, we had a brief sub, brief conversation on this a while ago, but nevertheless, what was the bylaw again? Just have it right here in Victoria. What was the number?
Code of Practice for Automotive Repair Operations and Code of Practice for Vehicle Fleet Operations, I think it is, I'm sorry.
In Victoria. In Victoria. Pardon me?
Thank you.
2922?
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you both.
Thank you very much. Closing comments, Ms. Samra.
We do have, I'm just, you know, there's many bylaws, so I can't possibly know everything like the back of my hand, but we do have prohibitions into our systems and a list here, which includes the stormwater, so I will check into this and see what the fines and penalties are.
Thank you. Thank you very much, appreciate it. And thank you for your due diligence. Thank you very much.
Thank you very much, and I really, I just really appreciate the city council, and thank you, Mr. Worshipful Mayor.
Thank you.
Take care.
The next delegation is Mr. Kevin Shaw. And you have to five-
The mic comes really down.
Up to five minutes, sir.
Thank you. Kevin Shaw, President of the Victoria Crescent Association. The executive wanted to be here tonight, but they are all business people, and it is that busy time of the season, so they could not. But the executive, other property owners, businesses, merchants, shoppers, and pedestrians are very concerned about safety. Now, as the years go by, we are witnessing increases in downtown lawlessness, aggressive panhandling, open illegal drug use, defecation, and assaults. Some RCMP are now telling me it's the worst they have ever seen it. Security says it is the worst. And on the weekend, well, I was gathering up some Christmas decorations for the Santa Claus events on the weekend, and I was looking at wiring, too, that had been pulled out, one of the new light standards on the crescent, where a nice new snowflake is, is supposed to be on. It was out, the wiring had been pulled out, and as I was walking back across the street to a premise, I was chased by somebody yelling crazy things at me, like, "You're the RCMP, you're FBI." And they had their hands up, ready to grab me. And luckily, I had gotten out of the way, and I didn't have any harm come to me. But this is just one example. That's me. There are scores of others, and I've told you some of them. Uh, you must order operational action now. We must help the mentally challenged, but also help downtown shoppers, downtown business people. We must be safe, too, and pedestrians. Uh, last Monday, it questioned period, and it was question period. I asked for action there, and we started about a 20-minute discussion, but it was question period. Instead, then, just a couple of days later on Wednesday, I had, uh, I had found out that our downtown security patrol had been canceled. That was a quasi-ambassador program that was started in the summer, and I was aghast by this. And just a few days later, then I had somebody come at me, and I could tell you more incidents as well. So our downtown needs the help, it needs it now. We need operational action. It is time now for you tonight, we are now in a COW meeting, committee of the whole, and we need somebody to come up with some motions and get things going. I am really tired of coming to this podium. I'd like to be talking about better things and be bubbly, like the last presenter. So is the city, the Vancouver Island Health Association, the RCMP, I could go on and on and on, going to step up to the plate. Let's get into it.
Any questions for the delegation? Counselor Beswick.
Thank you, Mr. Shaw. Um, no questions, other than a comment. I think at the last meeting, did we not say that we were going to set up a task force and include other levels of government, and RCMP, and VHA, and city, and bylaws, and downtown merchants? And so we were going to put in place more meetings to take place in the future. I don't know what stage that finds itself in a week later, but certainly, it doesn't address the emerging, well, emerged concerns that you are identifying on a week-by-week basis. So I, I don't have an answer.
We need Counselor Beswick through the chair. We need some, at least some, uh, action now, some sort of boots on the ground, something right now in the intermediate time. And then, well, you come up with a motion for a task force, a committee, however you want to do it. It's got to be quick. It's got to be basically now. And so maybe something in the interim here, and, and I think security, the downtown security, some sort of professional ambassador program, like we had started maybe 10 years ago, back on the ground now, not cut something just last Wednesday. So we've got to do that, some, some stuff in the interim. I think there has to be a motion, or maybe some city staff advice, and then there, uh, there has to be a, a motion for something, a, a task for something with boots on the ground. No more talk, no more sandwiches, no more coffees.
Oh, just, is anybody else? Sorry. Yes, and when you shut your microphone off, you go to the bottom of the queue again. So I'll bring you back on. Counselor Beswick.
I believe that we did make a motion at the last meeting to establish a task force.
It was, pardon me, it was question period, so there was no motion. I think there was no staff at that time, so nothing has been made.
So, okay, fair enough. So nothing has taken place from last Monday, other than what you have just told me, is that the security that was there two days after that Monday has been removed?
Correct.
I don't know anything about that, or any rationale or reasons for that happening. Sorry.
Okay, so, Ms. Samra.
Thank you, Your Worship. Uh, so question period, staff wasn't present, but we were recording, um, decision points in the other rooms. I'm not sure if there was a motion or not, but, um, I think this is actually a good opportunity for staff to provide a bit of an update. You have both the, um, Community Vitality Committee and the Public Safety Committee are both looking at this issue, uh, in NIMMO and in the downtown area. And, um, Dale Lindsay's group through Bruce Anderson has done some public engagement about safety in the downtown. They've been running that for a number of months. They eventually took it to the Public Safety Committee to let them know what they were doing, because simultaneously, they were talking about public safety in NIMMO and the downtown, and the rise of, um, the issues that you've been presenting, as well as the amount of emails that Mayor and Council have been receiving. So we have two groups for the last four or five months have been talking about this issue. Uh, we haven't gotten the committees to a point where they're recommending the installation of an ambassador program or not. It may be that it goes there, but that's the work that's been going on behind the scenes. So I would want to know how we tie both of these committees to yet a third body, or a task force to deal with this. That would be something I'd want to consider, what's the best way of moving forward with it? Maybe you have all three doing it. Um, I think bringing in the provincial and other levels of government's important, because they need to be putting resources behind this, not just the city. Um, and then, I guess, the other component that council needs to know is that the budget that was put forward for the security guards' footprints did run out, and there is apparently not sufficient funds in Brad McCray's, uh, budget to hire them for the rest of the fiscal year. That doesn't mean you can't direct me to see if there's monies available to do, um, to hire them between now and December 31st. I would want to know how council would like to see that happen. Would it be after hours, uh, when bylaws, policing is done during the day? Those types of details, I'd want to know how you'd want me to approach that. Uh, that's certainly a possibility. Uh, and then I suppose at the next meeting or following this, I can update you on what funding is being put in the budget for 2018 to deal with this. But we are, this is being talked about in committees, you wanted to do a task force, so until those bodies come forward with recommendations, the status quo remains. The status quo is, monies that were used for security have been depleted, and, um, therefore, we would rely on perhaps operational programming, seeing what we can do with our bylaw enforcement officers, uh, to pick up, do extra work, or focus some of their efforts in particular areas. Uh, we could do that, or hire footprints. Those are just the ideas off the top of my head.
Thank you. Uh, got a full board here. Is there anybody that has any questions for the delegation?
Yes.
Counselor Yocum.
Thank you. Thank you, Ms. Samra, for the, those words. Um, Mr. Shaw, thank you, and it's unfortunate that you are, we are here on the subject. But nevertheless, I hear your, I feel your frustration. I feel that, the urgency. Question I have now, the, the security presence before, apparently it was just cut off recently, is that the, was that a security firm, the, the users feel comfortable doing a decent job, or we, or should we look elsewhere, or expand the scope, or, I don't know enough about the scope of their contract? Was the, okay, was previous security sufficient?
The security, uh, from footprint security, which was funded under my understanding totally by the city of NIMMO, was put in place, uh, for the summer, and then kept it going for a few months. Hopefully, it was to be till the end of the year, until we found solutions, firm solutions. And, uh, from what I am hearing from property owners and merchants, it was working. We had new people from Shannon and Sabina about, oh, six, seven years ago. That program lasted for several years. The, uh, the property owners started that over about a, a three-month period, then the city took it on. And, uh, we had a, a safer committee as well established at that time, and everybody's, it seemed to start coming together, but the, the downtown security patrol at that time did wonders. They got to know the street people, those that were homeless, had mental addictions, try and help them, get them to other agencies, as I understood it, before the RCMP and others had to be, uh, called into play. And, uh, that was dropped, uh, a couple of years ago. There was quite a bit of press on that. And finally, this summer, because the situation has been getting worse, uh, footprint security was hired via the city again to, uh, look after, uh, the downtown, uh, you know, kind of make inroads with, with the, the less fortunate people and try and get help for them, but also to be there for us to call on if we needed something, uh, as eyes and ears, et cetera, and as a shoulder, I guess. Uh, but with that being cut, uh, it's got a lot of people very upset downtown, especially, I, I just, you know, said, "We're coming onto a Christmas parade this Saturday." And so I, I believe, and those that I've talked to downtown, that that, that does need to be reinstated quickly now. Some money has to be found now. It's not much. Uh, you've got a budget of $190 million in this city, so it's not much. So at least to get that back into play, because I think they were making, from what I saw, inroads with, with the downtown. Does that answer your question, Counselor?
Yeah, just, um, Mr. Mayor, I'd just like to, uh, comment, if, if appropriate. I feel the urgency. I felt like the first model was decent, but the security is sort of bandit, but it was working interim. Um, I don't know if we need a motion to get the security in place ASAP, till we have, I'd like to make a motion.
So I wonder if we can add, and just finish off with any questions for the delegation?
Sure.
Any other questions for the delegation? Counselor Brennan?
Not a question for the delegation, but a clarification. Um, last week, was it, last week, um, when you, when you came and spoke to us, and I, um, suggested that we have, we have a, um, roundtable discussion with different levels of government, except, and all of that. My understanding was, is that that was transcribed, uh, because I checked at the end of the meeting with the assistants, and I said, "Did you get that motion?" Now, what I don't recall is whether it was a notice of motion or a motion.
Ms. Curry.
Thank you, Worship. So it was a notice of motion. It'll be on the next council agenda next week, and it was that council direct staff to coordinate a facilitated session to find community-based solutions for dealing with downtown disorder. So it was a notice of motion that Counselor Brennan made last week, and will be as a motion at the next council meeting next week.
And the, um, just for the clarification, um, it may well be that one of the ideas that comes out of that roundtable discussion would be a task force. But I agree with you that, uh, that's a, that's a discussion to have, we need to have it, but we need to put that, um, that, that support back in place, because obviously, the motion won't happen till next week, and then the invitations, et cetera, et cetera, that were into January. So, um, if Counselor Yocum was going to make a motion, I, I can support that.
Okay, thank you. So no more questions for the, for the delegation? Counselor Fuller?
Uh, through you to the delegation. The old, uh, Community Policing and Services Office, who works out of that right now? And is that working for you, or was it working for you in the Victoria Crescent area, as well as the downtown? When the RCMP bike unit worked out of it, when bylaws worked out of it, as well as when, uh, Shannon and Sabina worked out of it?
At that point, through the chair to Counselor Fuller, uh, we had a sense of ease, and we did find that things were improving. They weren't perfect, but at least the situation, the lawlessness downtown was not escalating. When the Community Policing and Service Office had, uh, the RCMP component in there of, uh, of, I think they had a downtown community constable, was there full-time. We had the bike unit that was started that was in there, that grew from two members up to four, then up to eight. Uh, we also had Shannon and Sabina with the downtown footprint security slash ambassador-type patrol. Uh, we were supposed to have at that point, I should say, the city, I was in on those discussions, uh, fire prevention, a person was supposed to be in there. Uh, my understanding, we were supposed to have some, uh, street outreach, outreach workers in there as well. That never did happen. And now, it's gone back because of RCMP concerns, and perhaps, uh, the former constable, Counselor Armstrong, can speak on that, but because of security, uh, security concerns for computers and, and crime prevention information, I should say criminal computer information, uh, I don't know what the RCMP status is of now using that office further, but, uh, we downtown would definitely like to, uh, see, uh, some further, uh, component, and that that office, uh, be kept open. I know the Corps of U says to close it, uh, because the, uh, the SARC building is only a block, block and a half away, but maybe it's just we feel as property owners and merchants, a lot more at ease and a lot more comfortable knowing we can go in there. I know they're not the RCMP with handcuffs or firearms, it is just bylaw, but we would like to see the city keep that office there in place.
Thanks. Uh, I was curious as to what you thought about it in the past, and just because the Corps of Services Review recommends, uh, not having it anymore, I believe that came up as a result of the only people in it were bylaws. Uh, so it might make sense to somehow keep that building, and I guess if we get another committee going, we could always put that idea forward to them. Uh, I don't like the committee ideas. I think, uh, there's stuff that we could do, and we could do immediately. Thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so I don't see any further questions for you. So if we're, thank you very much, sir.
Thank you.
Um, now, I'm going to call for, uh, business arising from the delegations. Counselor Yocum.
Thank you. Uh, I'd like to, uh, make a motion for our CEO to implement the security that was presently in place, Victoria Crescent, for the interim, till we come up with a, how is the language here? You know my, to come, in the interim, till there's a, a grander plan with the circumstances of Victoria Crescent.
To reinstitute-
Yes.
-the additional security measures for the downtown corps pending the outcome of a recommendation from the task force.
Sounds smoother than me. That sounds good.
Great, thank you very much for that. Uh, so that's been moved by Counselor Yocum, seconded by Counselor Brennan. Thank you.
And I've checked with Mr. Memma, and we do have funds available.
Great, thank you very much. Okay, so now, next one on the hit parade is Counselor Armstrong.
Um, just to ans, answer, uh, Mr. Shaw's questions. I came here in 2010 and took over community policing, and that CPSO office was never used as a community policing, policing office since 2010. Uh, we did have our volunteer coordinator based out of there, and once in a blue moon, you would have, uh, cops drop by to talk to bylaws or whatever, but it was never, ever utilized since 2010 as a community police office. And my further question would be, uh, these issues have been going on for years, they're getting worse, I concur with that. I, I myself am downtown a lot, and I see that. However, until there's significant, in my opinion, significant influx of provincial and federal dollars, we're going to be stuck with a lot of issues, because there's no capabilities at the hospital to house these people. There's no places, when, you know, they're arrested, it's just a revolving door. So until we can get some commitments from the federal and provincial government, you know, I don't believe this all needs to fall on the city's hands, I know that part of it does, but we, we just don't have, in my opinion, the dollars to fund everything that's required. I think there's some small things that we can do to improve security, but I think it's, it's, it has to involve provincial and federal dollars. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Next is Counselor Thorpe.
Thank you, Chair. Uh, first, I agree with Counselor Armstrong's comments, and I, and I certainly will support the motion. Uh, over the past few days, I've spoken to several merchants on Commercial Street, and they're expressing the same frustration, uh, the same, uh, anger, that things have they're expressing the same frustration, uh, the same, uh, anger, that things have gotten so much worse recently, to the point now that when they go out to get a cup of coffee and have to cross the street, it, they call it running the gauntlet. Uh, and it's just not a safe situation for our downtown business people, or, uh, tourists or residents. So, um, it's, it's a bad situation, and, um, the very least we can do right now is reinstitute, uh, the security. Uh, I will say that the comments that I heard, speaking to these people, uh, were that they were complimentary about the job that the Footprints, uh, patrols had done. So I'm sure they would welcome a return to that. And I'll just also mention, uh, I know the area around the Military Museum is, is a real problem spot as well, so it's not just Victoria Crescent, it's, it's the whole downtown core. Thank you.
Thank you very much. So now, with respect to the motion, councillor Brennan, you're still on the list. You have to speak to the motion? You don't have to.
No, no, I'm just trying to think of the, the things I wanted to say. I just wanna say one, like, one thing to speak to the motion is that, um, when we had footprints before, um, the cost was shared. The DNBI A shared the cost, um, and they had, uh, they, and, um, some of the merchants in that, that area around, uh, the Crescent were also contributing, and then the city contributed. So there was three, um, sources and, and, which made it a little more affordable than, uh, than, uh, later.
Thank you. Councillor Yocum.
Thank you. I'm not sure if that, the funding comments are fact, but nevertheless, I'll, I'm not here to debate that. But what I wanted to mention, though, uh, Mr. Mayor, is the motions I made was for Victoria Crescent, but maybe when this group gets started, we can maybe think of expanding, because, Miss, uh, councillor Thorpe's right. I also have, we all know business owners, and they have the same struggles up to the corner, across the library way, and those areas as well. So, um, but that's another conversation, I won't muddy the waters right now. Thank you.
Councillor Fuller?
Um, to councillor Brennan's point, um, and the funding, and the mixed funding, if I'm not mistaken, I, I read a story that the, uh, Chamber of Commerce wants to do a Friday night market next year on Commercial Street. And the way things stand, I would not want a Friday night market on Commercial Street. So I'm wondering if there's any way the Chamber of Commerce could kick in funds to this, because many of their businesses, members of the Chamber of Commerce, are located in the downtown. So that might be something to, uh, that staff could approach, uh, Mr. Smythe with, uh, just an idea on further funding. Because when it was the DNBI A, we were funding the DNBI As, so it's sort of like us and the RDN.
I, I wonder if council could realize that, uh, realize that this is gonna go to committee?
Yeah.
And all of these ideas can come out of committee? The, we've asked, uh, we've had staff, staff right now to reinstate it. I expect we're paying the bill, so while all these other ideas are great, they're for committee. So I'm gonna call the question. Unless you've got something...
I, I'm director of Zans Brown Regional Library. This issue has become, um, very difficult for them. They have, um, formerly they had their hours open till eight o'clock at night. Now they've shifted down to five o'clock, because the public disorder in the square, in Diana Cross Square, has made it difficult for their employees and inside the library. I, I've been in there and seen it happen. So we, I think, cannot underestimate, um, how quickly we have to deal with this in, in a, in a pretty intense way right now.
All of the downtown, just on the ground.
Sir?
Yeah.
Okay, so I wanna call a question. There's a motion on the floor, it's been moved and seconded. All those in favor? Opposed? Motion carries. Thank you very much. Good debate. Next item is question period.
What?
Are there any questions?
Can you take a break while they do the questions, or do you...
No. Thank you.
I'm here just in case you need, uh, technical support on any questions regarding budget.
Thank you.
Considering it's only two dollars a coffee, you might be worthwhile. Thanks.
Okay, the first question is from Mr. Les Barkley. When did the December 2016 plan for the Rogers Ice Rink change? The city website states that the dock will be moved. It has been moved.
Oh, so...
It's gone.
I was there, uh, just a week or two ago, and it was still, the, the dock was still in Sweetland. Has it moved since then?
No, they're down at Brecken now.
Two months ago. Oh, when, when did that happen?
Obviously, since you've been there.
Since then. Oh, okay. Easy answer to that question.
Easy one.
All right. You don't give those very often. All right.
I, I would prefer, they're easy up-down, if we don't...
Well, it's not a key of why the docks, I just wanna state, the dock took a little bit longer, anticipate, which I'm not gonna get into tonight, for circumstances that the city had no control over, over fisheries and waters, and I'll leave it at that.
Good, thank you. The, the next one is on item 5A. When did council begin to discuss revenue and expenses similar to those presented on the 2017 to 2021 financial plan? Maybe you can help us with that, sir?
Yes. So, when I look at the budget, I, I tried to make sense of the, uh, financial, uh, budget documents that are on the city's website on the weekend, um, and, uh, they were from different departments. What I use when I look at the budget planning is the, the 2017 to 2021 financial plan, and that, that states, uh, revenues and that states expenses over a period of five years. Um, so I was kind of confused tonight when Mr. Memma, he gave the updated, the operating revenue is a hundred and fifty-eight million, and that doesn't fit in with the numbers here. So, and, and I had emailed him today, and I asked, "Well, when will a document like this be available to the public to, for consideration?" And I was told, uh, first quarter of 2018, which, which seems odd, is you're, you're going to pass a bylaw on December 18th, the, the fourth quarter of, of this year.
Okay, so if I could, one of the first things is that, uh, is that we're, we're not doing a, uh, we're doing the financial plan now, not the budget. So you have to, if, correct me if I'm wrong, Mr. Mayor, but we have to pass a five-year financial plan before we can get into budget deliberations.
Well, sorry, maybe I misspoke. This, this is, this says financial plans, so I'm trying to compare apples with apples, not apples with oranges.
Right.
So, the revenue anticipated revenues presented by Mr. Memma this evening is part of the PowerPoint, are what staff is predicting as our revenue sources, and he gave you the caveats, uh, to those.
And, and I think this probably goes to my point that I was trying to make earlier, is when I look at revenue, I look at, uh, I look at taxes and fees, user fees, and then there's all the others, including grants and so on and so forth. So I, I was just as confused as you were when he's used the term operational revenue, because now you're getting into, there's operational revenue, and then there's operational and capital. So, Mr. Memma.
Sorry. I got you back.
Thank you for assisting us with this.
Thank you, thank you. Uh, the, like, two, two answers to, to the question. The, the first one is the, the detailed budget document, uh, it takes a little bit of production to, to bring out. Uh, last year, what we did in December, we produced this shorter version, which is the budget in brief, which we're still going to do. So the detailed one is, that's the one I meant, uh, when I said it will show up in Q1, uh, because it, yeah, it's a production, it takes a little bit of time to produce, and so as of now, we're still in discussion. The, 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 the answer, the broader answer is the, the, the confusion about the, the flow of revenue in our presentations is, in, in municipalities, we tend to group everything in, say, operating and capital in one soup. We're moving away from that. Um, and I think I'm gonna put on our website the, the new format, which might mimic what you're looking at, which is what we're working off of. But what it does is, at the top, you have your operating and program revenues, and then after you have your, or your expenses, you get into the capital one. So when you're trying to compare the two, they're kind of like flipped, because in the past, we would flow everything from the top, operating and capital. Uh, and so I'll, I'll provide you with the reconciliation of, of how that looks like. Then thirdly, the, the numbers that you see from the 21, uh, 2017 to 2021 financial plan, uh, 2018 was a plan, and so those numbers may not be anywhere close to...
No, but, but that's what I'm trying to look at, is to see what the plan is for, from, uh, last, last year's, the 2018 plan, that's going to be updated, and I would like to know, as the public would at the, for the next E town hall forum, what those changes will be.
Sure, we'll, we'll provide that on our website.
And is it, is it obvious the difference between an operating budget and a capital budget? The capital budget, as we produce it now, has, hasn't always been that way, is pure capital. You're building something, you're buying something, there are assets, our facilities and our capital projects. Everything else goes into the operating. That's our salaries and benefits and training, professional fees, consulting contracts, studies, all the other things that we do. So those are the two different budgets. And a revenue, I don't, if you don't need the clarifier, an operating revenue. A revenue is something that the city's going to earn from charging fees or tax.
So I wonder if I could, uh, there was a discussion started earlier over the weekend, Friday, I think it was, and it was a, um, it was a recap of the, of the Ministry of Community Sport Cultural Development's, uh, cost per capita, or taxes per capita. And there's some pretty good conversations started when that thing came out, uh, when it was presented, and some pretty intelligent folks were asking the question, "At a hundred and seventy-two million dollars, um, our tax per capita is extremely high." And I had to point out that, no, that's not the tax per capita. What they're referring to in there, the tax is only the tax collected. So it, it, very quickly, he converted a thousand dollars a year per capita into about nineteen-hundred. So operational, you know, operational, um, revenue, uh, taxation, user fees, all that, all I, all I ever look for is, if you own a house in Animo, for garbage, sewer, water, taxes, everything, what's that bottom right-hand corner look like? What's that number look like? Comparing it to another community. So your point's well taken.
Yeah, I, I think you have the, the budget or planning town hall coming up, and I, I struggle to understand what was on the city's website. These are mostly reports, slideshow presentations. I think the public will have an even more difficult time sorting it out, and, and, uh, just, uh, some advice.
I, I, I agree, I agree. Next question, again from Mr. Barkley. Another good question. Will council agree, and this is for Mr. Memma, will council agree, policing costs for 2018 are to increase at 3.5%? Will there be a similar 4.4% cost, uh, overrun in 2017 as there was in 2016? Did you mean surplus or overrun?
Uh, no, overrun. I, I based this, uh, this, the second half of my question was from an email that I sent to council and staff about two weeks ago. I have yet to receive a reply. Um, the first was based on Mr. Memma's presentation tonight. So, so the first is actually directed to council, and actually, the second one, I think, i- is something that council could, could consider, uh, either instead or, or rather than staff. So let, let me give the background. So Mr. Memma, uh, stated tonight that the policing, uh, pressures are, uh, for 2018 will be one million dollars. So I just looked at the, uh, 2000, uh, 2017, 2018 budget for policing, uh, costs, and that was roughly twenty-nine million dollars. So I just divided one million by twenty-nine, and that gave me about 3.5%.
I think we're gonna need Mr. Memma on this one.
Yeah, yeah, Worship, I, I don't have my slide up. Uh, what, what I say, the one million dollars is RCMP and other.
Oh, I thought just RCMP.
Yeah, and other.
Oh, I missed the other.
Right. And, and the RCMP part relates to three, uh, uniformed officers and two support staff, and that comes to about just under seven hundred thousand dollars for those.
Okay, all right, so that, that misinformation was missing from the slide, slideshow.
And other.
Okay, yeah, and, and I struggled a little bit, the, for fire, fire, or the other budget pressures were mixed with, uh, uh, not, uh, it was QP, fire, and that, so I, I couldn't make sense of that. Okay, all right, that question's answered. Okay.
Thank you.
And, and, and the 4, 4.4% overrun, that was, that was based, again, on looking at the actual, uh, costs and the budgeted costs from, uh, 2000, 2016 to 2017. I can answer that one.
I don't have anything in front of me, but we did have to do a retroactive payment to the RCMP, uh, for salary increases negotiated as part of the collective bargaining. It may be attributable to that.
Okay.
Um, generally, uh, we've been running, um, surpluses, like huge surpluses with the RCMP, uh, but I think they, we used all of the, uh, we had a, a reserve, and we used that to do the retroactive payment for collective bargaining.
Answer.
So it would have been possible that what you saw was a retroactive payment to the settlement of the RCMP contract, that had been anticipated, and it was, and there was money in reserve for it. Councillor?
Thank you. I just wanted to clarify, so you're saying that the 4.4% over budget...
That's right.
So you're saying that, why do we pay an extra 4.4%?
Yes.
That's not shown on...
That's right, yes. So, so it's actually, the, when I look at the numbers from, uh, from 2000, 2000, where was it? I have actual...
So are you referring to the 2018, 2018 budget? Or are you talking about the past budgets?
I, I'm, I'm referring to the consolidated statement of operations. So actually, this is financial statements, which shows the budgeted number and the actual number for 2016. And it shows that for policing, the, the actual, the budgeted for 2016 was twenty-eight million, three hundred thirteen thousand, and actual was twenty-nine million, three hundred nine, three hundred ninety-nine. So it's a 4.4% difference.
I wonder if I can interject here, and the fact is that, that the report you're looking at...
Yes.
Is not on tonight's agenda.
Okay.
It's not. We can't answer your question, because we don't have that document in front of us.
But that's, I sent an email, and I have to counsel and staff, and I didn't receive a reply.
Your email's not on tonight's correspondence, or, tonight's agenda either. We can't possibly answer your question. If you want to delve down, I'm sure Mr. Memma would be happy to do a sidebar conversation with you.
Right.
Councillor, councillor Kippus first.
Um, yeah, I guess with the RCMP thing, one of the things we run into is the cost of investigation, is going way beyond belief, uh, for these murders that we've had, and there was a number of them within the last year and the year, uh, the year after, and this last budget. Yeah, uh, November 2016, uh, or 16th, you sent us an email. I'm still working on August, 'cause I get about eighty emails a day, so you'll have to wait for my answer. Just kidding. I don't get back to everybody. How do you expect every councillor to answer your question when you send a question to all of us? How much time do we have? So what I'm gonna say about this, yes, the police has gone up, but I believe the cost overrun, and we talked about that, is these court cases are taking forever to get to the, and it's costing huge amounts of money. And I can't think of the two investigations we had in that year that were running way up, way up.
Western Forest Park.
What's that? Western Forest Park, the shootings. Thank you very much. That cost a pile of money to investigate. It cost our city a lot, because the mills closed now. And the second with the fire one, I'm disappointed with the firefighter increases and all staff increases they show in the Core Service Review. But we're based a lot of times on our fire, is, we go with whatever they settle in Vancouver, and that's kind of this, and we don't get to, we don't get to bargain anymore with our people. I mean, if you're a firefighter in Animo, a union firefighter, you get the same as somebody in Vancouver. If you're a union firefighter in Kelowna, or Vernon, or Pentic, or wherever the union guys are, they get that same compensation, which I think is, it's, it's a bit scattered for me. It's a bit too much, too much entitlement to me for this.
For, for firefighting, the budgeted and the actual, we're, we're very close. There, there wasn't a, a significant discrepancy with that.
Well, and sometimes I wonder how we meet those budgets. What have we cut out to make the budget? What have we, what would be eliminated that maybe was a council direction? And those are the type of things you have to dwell, delve into in that, too. And those police costs and those fire costs are running huge now. They're getting to be huge. But thank you for, and then, like I say, I'll, I'll try and get back to you. I've got this from the 16th. But it's also shortly after the one you condemned us horribly for not doing the land up at the, um, the watershed. So when I get bad emails, it's really hard to respond with a nice one later. Thanks.
Councillor Armstrong?
Uh, just to clarify, part of the reason that the costs were higher this year was retro pay for the, the raise. It went back to 2000, I believe, 2015, so that's one of the other reasons. Second reason that you may not be familiar with is that every time somebody is off duty for more than thirty days, that person gets put over to the provincial co-later, so the, for more than 30 days, that person gets put over to the provincial co-later, so the city no longer pays for that individual, because you're only paying for rotable cops. And last year, we had a very good year where we went from 15 being off down to two, so that would, that would also account for significant dollars more being billed back to municipality. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, that's the same.
Motion to adjourn.
Oh, no, he has some question, but there's no staff there, so.
From Mr Kevin Shaw.
Thank you, your worship. It is the downtown community policing office, so my question is, was there ever a community policing constable, at least in that office, a lot of the time? I have just been apparently told there was not.
Councillor Armstrong.
I believe from 2006, there are boats, there was, and it was based out of over by the library area, then they moved down, and my understanding was at that time, it wasn't policed out of there by a police officer, but it was, the volunteer coordinator was based out of there. Bylaws and bike squad would hold their meetings there quite regularly, along with Sabina and them, so that was made use of by regular members, but to actually have a police officer stationed out of there has never been possible, because you can't put computers into that building, because it would cost millions of dollars to bring it up to RCB security standards. Thank you.
Yes.
Thank you for that. Question, initially, was daytime security started by businesses downtown, then somehow moved to the city paying the entire shot? Initially, first three months, downtown security patrol of footprints, who paid for it for the first three months? Does anyone know?
No.
This year?
No, no, when it started.
No.
Eight, 10 years ago.
I thought there was a partnership.
It's my understanding, it was businesses, we gave a bit of money at that time, and it was started, and then eventually, it was my understanding that it did go to the city. Now, the overnight security patrol, and I could stand corrected, but the overnight security patrol, was that now paid via businesses and property owners through the Business Improvement Association with the city, the overnight patrol?
Went through the VICC for the last piece.
The understanding back a couple of weeks ago, about how the money, how the cost was divided up, was that it was the three. It was the city, it was DNBI A, at that time it was the partnership, and businesses, I think mostly on the Crescent.
Thank you.
It was shared three ways.
Okay, because the overnight, apparently some businesses and properties were not paying the city for protection of this building, City Hall, the annex, et cetera, the city started to foot most of the bill, because it wasn't being paid. And my last question is, the motion that was just made, and I just don't want to be, you know, concentrating on the Victoria Crescent area, I want everybody to come downtown and for it to prosper. So that motion that was made and adopted tonight, is that for the footprint security patrol to now encompass all of downtown?
Well, I can only speak for myself, and we just do a show of hands, rather than everybody talk for another 20 minutes. My understanding was that it was for all of downtown.
Downtown core is.
Okay, downtown core. So those who believed it was downtown core, hands up.
Right.
Okay. So there's your answer.
So yes, thank you very much, I care about the entire downtown, just not our little area. Thank you so much.
Motion to adjourn. Motion to adjourn. Councillor Kip, seconded by councillor Armstrong, all is in favor. Opposed, motion carries.